Do I have a motion to continue a public hearing on zoning amendments? I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Motion passes. Okay. So with that said, our public hearing is officially open. Um, I just want to say that, um, every speaker is limited to three minutes. Um, of course, it's not a Q and A, so you can ask questions, but really, we're here to listen to your comments and take notes. Um, the board will not answer any questions during this meeting. Uh, we're here to just internalize everything you have, you're, you're gonna say to us. Take notes. And, um, you know, if there's anything for clarification, we can respond back to you after the meeting. Um, but for the time being, we're gonna stay silent, and we're just gonna listen to everything that everyone here tonight has to say. Um, are we, do we have the first speaker?
Okay. First, I want to apologize to anybody if I butcher your name. The first person up is Roger Danek.
Good evening. Can anybody hear me? Hello? Good evening. My name is Roger Danek. I have lived in, grew up in, and participated in this town my entire life. I have resided right here on Riverwood Avenue since 1960. My first real job was here on Main Street, at Waschinsky's Bakery, in the mid-seventies. It was the tail end of the area's golden age when many people came here to visit the beautiful landscape, clean air, clean water, and our streams, ponds, and fasses. They say that's what makes the bread, our bread and pizza dough, the best anywhere. I have witnessed the end of that era and the progression toward a massive housing boom throughout the entire town of Fallsburg and surrounding areas. I have also witnessed a huge undertaking years ago that created the Woodburn, Hurleyville, Old Falls Water and Sewer Project and later expansions. At present, our critical infrastructure will be overcapacity at the pre-planned buildout of new homes. That infrastructure is also near obsolescence stage and is beginning to fail. The aquifer under us that provides the water we so critically need is also at full capacity of use, and oftentimes, there is no water left in the summer months to draw from, causing existing residents' wells to run dry. We cannot sustain any further high, medium, group-density housing or large-scale industrial growth. Old hard facts. The proposed amendments to current zoning laws and rules are unnecessarily, unnecessary, unsustainable, imprudent, and several cases, illegal. Complete oversight during any future growth developments must be maintained. We cannot continue to bend and amend the overall, the overall plan to conform to individual or specific interest projects whenever a new one comes along. I implore you to follow Sullivan County Planning Board Commission's suggestions to not make any of these changes. A full review and complete overhaul of the Town of Fallsburg Comprehensive Plan is of immediate concern to clarify the existing document before any further amendments to the existing are made. Another topic of immediate concern that needs to be addressed is to make sure...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
If you have your, um, if you have your comments written down, you can submit it to us, and we should put it, make it part of the record.
It's, it doesn't work like that, but think...
You can go in.
Yeah, you can't yield the answer to her person.
It doesn't work like that.
Thank you, Roger.
Pam Wagner.
I have them written down, but I...
Go ahead, Pam, your time is starting.
Good evening, members of the Town Board and fellow residents. We are here to express our strong opposition to the proposed zoning changes, which will override the town's comprehensive plan, harm our environment, and create long-term issues for our community. In an effort to avoid potential lawsuits, the town's legal counsel has adopted an overly broad interpretation of ARUPA. However, complying with state and local zoning laws does not constitute a substantial burden on religious exercise. Protecting our zoning laws is not an act of discrimination. It is a commitment to responsible planning and fair land-use policies. Additionally, the proposal would legalize and allow a 50% expansion of non-conforming bungalow colonies, enabling large-scale renovations. If approved, these changes would permanently alter Fallsburg's rural landscape and contradict the goals of the 2018 Town Comprehensive Plan. Environmental and legal concerns. These zoning amendments qualify as a Type 1 action under the CEQA, meaning they presume to have a significant environmental impact. Under CEQA, an environmental impact statement, an EIS, is required. Yet, the Town Board is considering these changes without conducting a thorough environmental review. Major concerns include increased demand on water resources, aquifers, and wastewater treatment plants, further deforestation, loss of farmland, strain on the electrical grid, overcrowded roads, and changes to community character. County's official disapproval. Following a Section 239 review, the county has formally disapproved these zoning changes, stating that years of piecemeal zoning edits have created inconsistencies and unintended consequences. While some of these changes attempt to correct past confusion, they instead create further problems. The county strongly recommends that the town update its comprehensive plan before implementing zoning changes, ensuring a cohesive and community-driven approach to future development.
Stan, Stan, just wait until the telephone, who starts the clock, okay? Okay?
The county's reasons for disapproval include unclear guidelines...
Stan Wagner, by the way.
The proposed code allows for broad interpretation, which would permit or restrict certain uses in ways that contradict the town's comprehensive plan, but also lacks clear density guidelines. Two, potential ARUPA violations. The language of the proposal could expose the town to legal challenges. Three, failure to comply with CEQA. The, the proposed changes do not adequately assess the environmental impacts as required under the state law. All necessary environmental review forms must be completed to fully evaluate direct and indirect consequences. Four, harm to, harm to agricultural districts. The Sullivan County Farmland Protection Board has determined that the zoning changes would conflict with the intended purposes of Fallsburg Agricultural District and sections of County Agricultural District Number 4. In conclusion, comprehensive plans and zoning codes should be updated as communities grow, but they must be done responsibly and with unified community vision. Rushing these zoning amendments without proper environmental review and comprehensive planning will have long-term consequences for Fallsburg, Fallsburg's infrastructure, natural resources, and rural character. We urge the town to reject these proposed zoning changes and instead on, instead focus on creating a transparent, community-driven planning process that ensures responsible growth while preserving our town's character. Thank you.
Janet Leibl.
Good evening. My name is Janet Leibl. I do live in Mamakating. I pay Fallsburg School District taxes, and I own land here in Fallsburg. I'm also a former Town Mamakating Supervisor. I was Town Councilwoman and Planning Board Member. So I do have a seat at the table. During the time that I was Councilwoman and Planning Board Member, we went through the Shalom Land Years with the land grab and the vote of fraud and the bait and switch. When we did our comp plan, which was approved in 2019, we did a hydrological study. I believe we're the only town in Sullivan County that has done this hydro study. I'm asking you not to change the zoning laws until Fallsburg does their own hydrologic study. This will give you the opportunity to see where the, where the water is and where the water is lacking. Currently, if you look at Mamakating, and I say this because all of our towns are not an island. We all depend upon each other. We are all neighbors. Currently, Mamakating, especially Bloomingburg, is having tremendous water issues. There was a property on, um, Old Rousick Road. It was a two-acre piece of property that had a single-family house. It was sold to a developer, and there were 16 units put up on that property. A 239 was issued by the county, a negative 239, they built it anyway. And what happened was, those buildings are still sitting half-unfinished, half-empty because they do not have water. Around the corner on Godfrey is the, uh, is the Godfrey Senior Center. Our senior citizens do not have water. Their well ran dry in the summer, and the current owner's brought in a water truck with a garden hose to go into the building. The well is now dry, and there is another water truck there, supplying water with a garden hose. The sustained growth just can't support our water usage. We currently have wells on High Street that are running dry. We have trouble with raw sewage that is going into the Neversink. It has been going into the Neversink for two years, until the DEC finally stepped in after being told for two years about this. So I know your, your, uh, comp plan was done in 2006, and there was an update in 2018. But without a few, a full hydrological study, you really need...
Your time is up, thank you so much.
...to hold this.
Good evening, hi. Um, I'm gonna have to summarize this letter because it's more than three minutes.
Can you state your name?
Ken Tichello Woodberg. Dear Supervisor Ben Simon and Town Board, I submit this letter in opposition to the proposed amendment of the Fallsburg Zoning Code. The purpose of this letter is to describe the adverse legal ramifications which would follow if the board enacted these ill-advised amendments based on relevant cases dealing with the issue. Contrary to the claims made by several individuals, our current zoning laws do not violate the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, ARUPA. Those individuals would have no legal basis for bringing a lawsuit based on ARUPA because ARUPA protects religious institutions from restricted zoning, and our current zoning does not discriminate against religious institutions. On the other hand, the town could face a costly lawsuit if these amendments were to be adopted into our zoning code. The current zoning code should be left in place despite the claims made by those seeking special treatment. The following federal cases show that is when a municipality amends their existing zoning code, that they are subject to lawsuit, not when a municipality leaves an existing code in place which has worked for years and is in compliance with a comprehensive plan, as in our case. I can't cite all the cases here because of time, but I'll cite some of them. Religious users are not exempt from zoning. A religious group has no constitutional right to be free from reasonable zoning regulations, nor does it have a constitutional right to build its houses of worship wherever it pleases. It's Algebi Bible Baptist Church versus Township of MoFA. Courts have consistently recognized that land use regulations is one of the store powers of the states. City of Edmonds versus Oxford House Incorporated. ARUPA does not provide that religious uses must be permitted in any zoning district or that proposed use of property is allowed as a right. Municipalities regulate land use with zoning and other controls based on their comprehensive plans, which outline municipalities' long-term goals and policies that guide local land use decisions and operate as bootprints for development. As the Sullivan County Planning Board has observed, Fallsburg has developed such a comprehensive plan after years of study, and our zoning code is in keeping with our, that comprehensive plan. I'm gonna cut to the chase here. In Castle Hills versus First Baptist Church versus City of Castle Hills, the federal court denied summary judgment to a church and found that the city's hostility toward the church arose not from religious discrimination but from concerns over its size and proposed growth, which threaten to outstrip the character and size of the city. In sum, based on the cases dealing with the issue, the adverse legal ramifications which would follow if the board enacted these ill-advised amendments...
Thank you for your time.
...all outweigh the threat of a lawsuit if the board rescues the zoning code.
Lori Bernstein.
Good evening, Town Board members and community. My family has had a home in Woodburn for 45 years. I'm speaking tonight to urge you to reject the proposed zoning amendments. There are three critical reasons why these changes should not move forward. First, the Sullivan County Planning Board has already recommended against these amendments. They believe the proposed changes lack proper environmental review and do not align with our town's comprehensive plan. Second, these amendments would create serious environmental and safety problems. They would increase housing density in agricultural zones, potentially deplete our already low water supply, create sewage management challenges, compromise fire department response capabilities. Third, contrary to claims you may have heard, our current zoning does not violate any religious land use laws. Multiple court cases have consistently upheld municipal rights to maintain zoning regulations that protect a community's character and environmental safety. If you approve these amendments, the town could face expensive legal challenges. The safer, more responsible path is to maintain our existing zoning code, which has served our community effectively and legally. The decisions you make about land use and environmental protection will shape Fallsburg's future for generations. I respectfully ask the Town Board to prioritize the long-term sustainability of our natural resources while continuing to welcome appropriately scaled religious facilities to our community. I ask that you protect our town's environment and safety by rejecting these proposed amendments. Thank you.
David Perez.
Hey, good evening, neighbors and, uh, members of the Fallsburg Town Board. And that annoying noise. My name is David Perez. I'm a landowner here at Hurleyville, and I wanted to talk today about a critical issue in the proposed zoning amendments: the unfair prioritization of non-conforming uses over conforming ones. This approach contradicts the town comprehensive plan and a well-established legal precedent. Non-conforming uses should be phased out, not encouraged. The New York's highest court, the Court of Appeals, has made it clear, I'm gonna quote them here, "The regulations governing non-conforming uses are therefore adopted in order to provide a gradual remedy for existing undesirable conditions resulting from such incompatible, non-conforming uses, which are detrimental to the achievement of such purposes." In other words, the purpose of allowing non-conforming uses is not to expand or strengthen them, it is to phase them out over time, to bring the community into alignment with the zoning code's intent. Yet, the proposed amendments do the exact opposite. Instead of reducing non-conforming uses, such as bungalow colonies, they give them preferential treatment, allowing for 50% expansion, increased density, and more intensive land use, all at the expense of property owners who comply with zoning laws. The town's comprehensive plan lays out a very clear vision for controlled, sustainable growth that aligns with zoning regulations. These amendments contradict that vision by creating special pathways for non-conforming uses to flourish. Why are we rewarding properties that don't conform to zoning instead of supporting those that do? Why should we... Why should legally compliant homeowners and businesses be forced to bear the burden of increased density, traffic, and environmental strain caused by non-conforming expansions? This undermines the very purpose of zoning, to ensure orderly development and to protect community interests. By granting expanded rights to unconforming uses, the town is opening the door to potential legal challenges. Courts have repeatedly ruled that municipalities must not create zoning loopholes that favor non-conforming uses at the expense of zoning integrity. This could lead to costly litigation that we would pay for. It could also set a dangerous precedent, make it harder to deny future expansion requests from non-conforming properties. The Town Board, you kinda have a duty to uphold the comprehensive plan and protect the integrity of our zoning laws. These proposed amendments blew Fallsburg in the wrong direction. I urge the board to reject these amendments and instead focus on policies that phase out non-conforming uses over time as intended by law. Zoning must work for everyone, not just a select few. Thank you.
Dylan, just wait till they start the clock.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me here, thank you, Council. My name is Dylan York, and I am a recent homeowner here in Mountaindale. I bought a place in July, um, my partner and I. My girlfriend and I looked at the property around April, and there was this beautiful stream running through the entire, like, six-and-a-half acre lot, and we just fell, fell in love with the water element, the whole place. My best friend owns a property right around the corner, so I'm incredibly fortunate to be here. My friends and family love coming up here. But as soon as we took ownership of the house, uh, the well was dry, the, the stream had dried up, uh, the water wouldn't come out, smelled completely like sulfur dioxide. It was ridden with so much sulfur that you couldn't even, couldn't even drink it, couldn't take a shower in it. Uh, I had to spend a ton of money on water filtration systems to try to get that back up. So it's highly concerning. You know, I've been waiting five years to live here, and finally found a dream home, and, uh, and all of a sudden, I learned about infrastructure. It's not, this place is not set up for the growth. There hasn't been enough studies done. There's people that have been before me and after this, and they can quote plenty of the legal, uh, you know, litigations and all the facts, but I'm just not seeing the, the smart money on how do you expand without the proper data? Uh, my background in the wine industry, I look over 300 acres of properties in Argentina, Napa Valley, and water is incredibly important to us. And I can tell you right now that recharging well systems is highly expensive. You do not want to go down that route because once you tap these things out, there's no guarantee that you're gonna get your water back. And I would love to get ahead and I'm officially opposing this until there's further data given to us that can ensure that our investments that we have currently right now are in, are certified, are secured. Um, I'm all about growth, but let's do it with smart data and, uh, and make sure that we understand how that's gonna impact all of us.
Go ahead. You're on the timer.
Yeah, but your, your mic's not working. Um, can someone check his mic?
Put a switch.
Sounded good. I won't touch it.
Janet, reset the clock.
Yeah, I'll be done before...
Go ahead.
The, uh, I've been coming up to Sullivan County since 1981 when I came from New York. I became permanent resident here, resident here in 2004. And, uh, I'm a licensed electrician here. I'm a certified state enforcement officer, state code enforcement officer also. I think, uh, people have the wrong idea of what is a non-conforming property, and it's, uh, important that we, we, I don't think, I think, it looks to me from the people I've heard, and from the, is that there's a misnomer about non-conforming, that people think that non-conforming is, I built it this way to not to be non-conforming. But actually, non-conforming is, it was built before the codes were here in place, and it's called non-conforming because if it was now, it'd be non-conforming. But it is legal the way it is now. To, uh, when, um, non-conforming is not a negative, uh, definition of a property or a structure. Non-conforming is the definition for it, that it doesn't meet the present code, but it meant, it meant the codes that were in effect when it was built. There's nothing negative about it, though. So, uh, when we want to change the codes to affect or changes to a non-conforming property, I could understand it, um, especially since I'm an electrician and it does me good if I can, I can work on these properties. However, it still has to be a safe, safe, uh, safe method of building. I don't want to see water dry up, the wells dry up, and I don't want to see tons of traffic that are, is, is not, uh, is not viable, you know? We have terrible traffic in Woodburn for two months out of the year, and for the last two weeks also, um, due to the situation there. But, uh, in, in, in changing the code or amending the code certainly has to be done in a way that is, um, done intelligently, intelligently, and, uh, and not, you cannot tell a property owner or a person has a non-conforming bungalow that he can't expand, he has a, has... We had, used to have many, many, many hotels up here. All this is, I think, almost all those hotels are gone. From thousands of hotels, they're gone. So, you're gonna tell me that we were able to handle thousands of hotels, but now, but now, we can't handle extra bungalow colonies. It's a little bit hard to understand, so it needs to be, uh, considered in the whole scene of making changes. Thank you.
David Schenher.
Thank you, good evening. I'm, uh, here to discuss growth in the Fallsburg area. I've, I've been in this area for about 25 years, and, um, what I've seen is that this area has a tremendous opportunity. It's a gold mine, actually, uh, for growth because, uh, there are so many people that want to be in this area. Before I was here, I was in an area that's very similar to this. It's the Hamptons in, in Eastern Moon Island. Very similar because both areas are a summer vacation area, a place where during the, during the winter months, there are very few people living there, and it expands tremendously during the summer. There's a great difference between the Hamptons and here. In the Hamptons, uh, it's, there is a lot of wealth and a lot of business, a lot of things going on because it's pro-business, because it's pro-growth, because they, they want, they understand that their whole sustenance comes from the summer months. In this area, it's been difficult, and I think these zoning changes are addressed to try to change that and to try, try to make it so that this town can see the amount of growth that it really deserves. Thank you.
I, I think it's inappropriate that you do that. It's okay to be positive and clap, but it's inappropriate to boo. Everybody has a right to that. So, Lucia Snahura.
Lesha.
Lesha, sorry.
Lesha.
I got, I was almost there.
We got the last name right, right?
Lesha.
Right.
Okay, so my name is Lesha Snahura, and I'm a resident of Hurleville, New York. Dear members and town boards, I'm here today to express my strong opposition to the proposed zoning changes that would allow high-density development, including those by religious institutions in the agricultural and recreational zones of Fallsburg. My concern is rooted in the health and well-being of Sullivan County residents, and I urge you to consider the broader implications this change could have on our community health, the progress we have made, and the quality of life for our residents. As you are aware, Sullivan County has made great strides in improving overall health rankings. Sullivan County health rankings recently rose from the 60th to the 57th place out of 62 counties in your state. While this progress is commendable, there is still a lot of work to be done to address the health challenges we face, including high rates of chronic disease like heart disease, diabetes, and obesity. Mental health issues, including depression and anxiety, continue to affect large portions of our population. Additionally, limited access to healthy food and adequate spaces and physical activity continue to hinder our community's overall wellness. Organizations like Sullivan County 180 have worked tirelessly to improve these conditions by increasing access to healthy food, promoting physical activity, and fostering environments that support mental health and wellness. These efforts are vital for the continued improvement of our health rankings in Sullivan County. By supporting initiatives such as open green spaces for active living, we create a healthier and more sustainable environment. However, the proposed zoning changes threaten to undermine these critical health-focused initiatives. Zoning laws have a direct impact on the built environment and the spaces where people live, work, and play. Agricultural zones are essential for preserving green open spaces, supporting food supplies, and ensuring residents have access to fresh produce. They also provide opportunities for outdoor physical activity, which is crucial for mental and physical well-being. If we allow developments such as religious institutions that take up large portions of land into these zones, we risk losing vital green spaces and local agricultural land. This leads to increased traffic and pollution, which has a negative impact on our public health. Moreover, Rupa protects religious institutions from certain zoning restrictions. While I firmly support the protection of religious freedoms, I believe that compelling interests of public health must take precedence. The continued preservation of agricultural land and green spaces is essential for maintaining health of our residents. There are many non-agricultural zones in the town where religious institutions can't be accommodated without jeopardizing the health and well-being of our community. In conclusion, my husband left me with that conclusion.
Do you want to introduce, because I'm afraid I'm not going to say his name.
This is my husband, Ehor Snahura, and.
Will we?
We're right here. And I'm just going to submit my letter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and state your name, sir.
My name is Ehor Snahura, and I'm going to finish reading for my wife. Sullivan County's health challenges are not to be taken lightly. The ongoing improvement in our health rankings has been driven in part by zoning laws that protect our agricultural land and promote access to health food, healthy food, clean air, and green spaces. It is crucial that we continue to protect these areas to ensure that Sullivan County remains on an upward trajectory to a better health outcomes for all residences. I urge the Town Board to reject the proposed zoning changes that would allow high-density development, including those by religious institutions in agricultural and recreational zones in the town of Fallsburg. By doing so, you will help preserve our green spaces, support our local agriculture, and promote the physical and mental health of our residents. Let us continue to prioritize the health of our community and protect the progress we have worked so hard to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Aaron Capron. My family has been in the town of Fallsburg since 1890. We have owned 5131 Main Street since 1904. That's four generations of members of the South Fallsburg Synagogue. Cabin Cabinet was started in 1947. My great-grandfather helped build the Rivley Theater, the Hayden Hotel, and many other buildings in Fallsburg. We used to service all the hotels in Sullivan County and Ulster County. My business has outlasted all of them. In that time, we've seen all the hotels come and go, but the infrastructure in Fallsburg that was built to provide for those hotels has not been improved. This was before modern standards. The new homes that are being built have standards from all across the state. Why are our infrastructure, why is our infrastructure not up to those standards? Many of the houses being seasonal, we get water usage surges at the beginning of the summer. What used to be individual bungalows with single bathrooms have become multi-bathroom homes that are still being filled, their toilets with potable water. On Route 42, a water main broke last summer. Our sewers are not ready to handle anymore. We've had low-water advisories multiple of the past years. In South Fallsburg, that's 1.3 million gallons that we have a low-water advisory. A word from my father, who used to be a fire commissioner. Still using the same eight-inch concrete asbestos-lined water main on Route 42 over the past 75 years, we can't raise the pressure or the mains will blow. Route 42 should be a 12-inch main. It cannot support the fire services. Hurts all of our ratings for insurance. If you hook up two fire trucks to the main in town, you can suck them both dry and make the entire line implode. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm a business owner. I have interest in selling cabinets and countertops to anyone and everyone. However, the longevity of our town and the residents and their welfare are more important than anything else. Thank you.
Well, I have to say that David Perez kind of stole my thunder when talking about non-conforming uses. I think he left out one or two items that I think I'd like to build on, and what those are, again, the amendment encourages density without adequate safeguards. This proposal states again that non-conforming multifamily uses can increase their floor area by 50%, subject only to slight plan approval by the planning board. However, there is, one, number one, no requirement to upgrade aging infrastructure, even in districts like HR, where sewer and water systems are already strained. Number two, no restrictions on the impact of parking, traffic, and emergency services, which we all know. And number three, no guarantee that these expansions will be in line with the comprehensive plan. Again, why should an old, non-conforming building be allowed to expand to this degree while a brand-new development must follow stricter density limits? This unfairly tilts the playing field in favor of non-conforming structures and undermines the entire purpose of zoning. The comprehensive plan, again, can't be set enough, demands smart, orderly growth. Fallsburg's comprehensive plan was carefully designed to promote sustainable, well-planned development. This amendment directly contradicts that vision by entrenching and expanding outdated developments instead of encouraging modern, well-planned housing. Again, I urge the board to reject the amendment. Zoning laws should not reward non-compliant. I have a personal story, and I'm going to say it. I lived on Husky Road in Hurleville. I lived here and moved away. I lived here most of my childhood, moved away for about 30 years, couldn't wait to come back to Hurleville. I told my husband I just loved it. I don't only want to come back to visit for family, you know, funerals or weddings. We came back, I bought a home. Within three and a half years, I was in the fight of my life with the Town of Liberty for the zoning changes and what happened there. I got threats, it was unimaginable. And what happened? When I first moved in, water on that street was hard to get, I had to frack my well. Then what happened was, as more developments came in, more structures, zoning laws, as far as I was concerned, wasn't followed, my well basically went dry. So I had a choice to make. Do I sell and move, which is exactly what I had to do? Do you know the cost and the implication that can have on people? Do people know with everything that's going on, wells cost in excess of $20,000? How many people that are living here in residence can afford that? They just don't know. The town has no understanding of what, I fought the Town of Liberty.
Good evening, board members. My name is Richard Mann, I'm an attorney with the firm of Katania Van Viner down in Orange County. I've been an attorney about 40 years. I represent about 200 different religious organizations and a number of Jewish camps here. I want to address just the language about religious uses, because I think it's very important. I don't believe it's a bad thing, I think it's a good thing. I think it's a good thing because it states the obvious, and it's nothing novel. What you're doing is you're protecting the town, and you're complying with our Rupa, and you're coming current with all of the modern codes. I say it's not novel because looking at religious organizations or religious freedom as a beneficial thing is embedded in the fabric of our nation for 250 years. We have the First Amendment, we have our Rupa, we have the presumption that religious organizations are beneficial, exiting the Internal Revenue Code. We have tax-exempt organizations, property tax exemptions, parsonage allowances, tax-deductible contributions. It's not so much religion, it's communities of faith. Communities of faith are beneficial. In these zoning amendments, you have sprinkled throughout religious uses, religious retreats, and presumptions that religious uses are a beneficial thing. That's particularly relevant to camps, especially Jewish camps. Jewish camps are in a special category. If you know anything about Jewish camps, they're not really camps at all. I say that because I've been to many camps, I represent dozens of camps. When you think of a camp, you think of horseback riding, archery, kayaking. There are activities that are Jewish camp, but what happens more than anything else is learning. It's an extension of the Jewish model of learning. Learning doesn't stop when the school year ends, it continues. And I see in your code, you've added definitions for religious retreat. What a Jewish camp is more than anything else is a religious retreat. It's an extension of Jewish learning. Why is that important in the code? It's important because the regulations of the State of New York actually penalize Jewish camps, because Jewish camps are not treated like other camps, and there is no classification for a religious retreat. I think here, this type of recognition, this type of definition brings fairness into the code and protects the town against lawsuits moving forward. As for all the other things, Haddai's designation doesn't lead to special treatment. You still have all the protections of the planning board, of the ZBA, of the Town Board. Every religious organization goes through the same scrutiny as every other organization. So it's not special treatment, it's recognition that's important, and recognition that protects the town and recognizes the heritage of the Jewish community that goes back over 100 years in this town. Thank you.
I'm here today to speak behalf of Linda Hobbie. You have her letter on file, but I'm just going to take some excerpts from her letter. But I would just like first to bring up the fact that Linda has, one, her home has the effects of the drilling of the well, which not too many people are speaking up about lately. But she has this issue that's going on to the fact that she's handing in aid to children or feel they'll come out looking like Smurfs. As someone who has lived here for quite some time, I have witnessed firsthand the beauty and natural resources that make this community so special. However, over the years, excessive construction projects have led to significant problems in our town, such as water shortage in summer months and traffic issues. One of the most alarming effects for me has been the dramatic decline in quality of my well water, which was a result of the Ghanu Eden well testing back in 2016. Up until that time, water for my well was crystal clear and springy, a true gift from the natural environment we were fortunate to live in. Unfortunately, this is no longer the case. The water turned rust-colored, and the well is tested, the well testing done by Ghanu Eden site by my husband, who has since passed, turned rust-colored, and after the well testing was done at the Ghanu Eden site. My husband previously had correspondence with the Mystic Ellen from the town of Fallsburg and Eric Engle from DRBC from 2016 to 2020. The letter was regarding the well issues we were having. This has been going on since 2016. Hydro-Environmental Solutions hired by Ghanu Eden monitored my well on several occasions. When the testing on the Ghanu Eden well was done, the initial report concluded that our well was in fact affected by the testing, and my well would require a long-term monitoring if Ghanu Eden ever applied for well permit. I find myself afraid to drink the water, and there are times I can't bathe my granddaughter because the top water is brownish-orange. I'm using bottled water for drinking, cooking, and washing my hair. I am extremely concerned that the damage to my well will be the project that is approved, and the wells are running continuously with extremely significant amounts of water usage. I'm going to sort of conclude with this, is that the fact that we have, I don't think you're aware of the fact that the application has been submitted to DRBC by Ghanu Eden for these respective wells that will use 7.5 million gallons a month.
Hello. Thank you guys for listening to All of Us today. I read the comprehensive plan for Fallsburg, and it's truly heartening, a piece of literature. I enjoyed seeing the efforts of volunteers and experts that spent hundreds and hundreds of hours detailing every aspect of our town, from geology and topography to land use to transportation, industry, education, and so on. Having read the comprehensive plan, I want to speak about New York State law, which requires compliance with the comprehensive plan. According to Town Law Section 272-A Subsection 11, "All town land use regulations must be in accordance with the comprehensive plan adopted pursuant to this section." So it's actually not optional, it's a legal mandate that the town is obligated to uphold. Any zoning changes that contradict, undermine, or fail to align with the comprehensive plan are legally invalid. The proposed amendments violate the obligation, wait, the proposed amendments violate the obligation this Town Board has. It contradicts the goals for orderly development outlined by the comprehensive plan. It prioritizes non-conforming uses over conforming ones, and it encourages density increases in areas where infrastructures such as roads, water, and sewer systems are already struggling to keep up. Ignoring the comprehensive plan doesn't just weaken zoning integrity, it exposes the town to legal challenges. Courts rule against municipalities that pass zoning laws out of step with their comprehensive plan. Zoning decisions impact every resident, our property values, our infrastructure, and our quality of life, and are meant to serve the community's long-term vision, not short-term interests. To quote the vision of the comprehensive plan of 2006 and 2018, "It is to guide future growth and development within the town of Fallsburg in a manner that respects the town's rural character so that its unique sense of place is enhanced, its agriculture, historic, and natural resources protected, its hamlets revitalized..." and natural resources protected, its hamlets revitalized, and its social and economic vitality ensured for years to come." I urge the town board to reject the proposed amendments and uphold its legal and ethical responsibility to enforce zoning laws that are in accordance with the comprehensive plan. I also want to say that I often say out loud, "This is God's country." However you interpret that statement, the sentiment remains. We live in a stunningly beautiful area that feels sacred to behold. All of us should feel a desire to protect and cherish this land that has brought so many of us here. We should want to protect the natural beauty of this land, the animals, the water, the forest, the air we breathe, and guide development and growth so that when we are gone, the beauty remains. We should feel proud to have done that for ourselves and future generations.
Alice Camara. My name is Alice Camara, I've lived in South Fallsburg for 28 years, and as the previous speaker said, I enjoy all the beauty that is here in South Fallsburg, and I want to see it preserved. I think the town board should wait until the zoning... To make any zoning changes, until a report is in from the county. And what can you tell is the rush to make zoning changes? After the report, we will have real data to work with. If we do it the wrong way, it's going to be more difficult undo that, so let's be sensible. The comm sewer and water infrastructure report is supposed to be done in six months. It will give an analysis of location, condition, and capacity of the water and wastewater infrastructure. All this needs to be considered before any project that requires sewer and water infrastructure assessed includes any that have packaged plans. There seems to be a lot of magical thinking, that we can keep building and there will always be water. The reality is, there isn't enough water now, and water issues are a big deal. I'm one of the people who turned on my faucet two days in a row last summer, and no water came out. It was a freaky experience, to say the least. I wish we would take this issue seriously. When the water isn't coming out of my faucet, who do I call to report it? This is a real issue. How would it be for you if you wake up to make your coffee in the morning, and there's no water? That's a possibility. I find it irresponsible that more developments are coming on board when clearly infrastructure isn't enough to handle all the development. It needs updating now, big time, and that has been acknowledged already. We need to update the water and sewer plant and replace aging water pipes and water towers. They're all very old. And we had a fire in my neighborhood in November, I think a year and a half ago. In November, not the peak summer season, and the fire hydrant next to the house was not working. Water tankers from Woodburn had to be brought in to put out the fire. It was a miracle that the adjacent homes were not destroyed, so this is a serious issue. Please take it seriously. Fire hydrants and all our pipes in our neighborhood need to be upgraded. And as a taxpayer, I strongly request that this hearing be brought to the government for more input from citizens.
Mose Freeman.
Hello, good evening, my name is Mose Freeman. I'm in La Cheltenham for the summer festival, I'd like to take the town board. We appreciate the effort, the help, the helping God does. Also the effort to save taxpayers money, and to come up with a law, and I'm really not a... I'm opposing a law, because I think a law is enough, and it still may bring an effect on some other litigations. People are going to want to do more, maybe, but I think the town is very fair, and we have been able to have an argument that we gave you enough, and understand the people who live around here, and we compromised for them, and gave them something in between, so we should not be every day in court for a little people law. However, I hear some people talking over here about non-performance for property owners. As one of the people mentioned before, there was a comprehensive plan. At the comprehensive plan, I don't really know the definition of comprehensive, that comprehensive means that we have to conquer... I would rather make it was non-comprehensive, because it was actually stolen property from property owners, people who were in compliance, were in performance, and the rights were taken away, and when some people want their rights taken away, you've got to go the other way around. That when somebody's getting someone's from an officer, you would always try to go to court, to argue, to fight the law, and find places in the world how we can fight against it. And with this, I do understand some people have issues with water and etc. Actually, I know of property that just been developed next to my place, and our wells are in good shape, because we take care of them. We properly maintain it. I appreciate those in the back. I don't think on the other side, anybody ever bought yet, and I think this place is a beautiful place. So, and it was, and the town board seemed to have the same issue with the rupee law, and the town had to come across more than we are getting now in the new code. I really, really appreciate it, that we see now, I would do with the old town board as well, but they did comprehensive law, and the comprehensive law was very one-sided, and now we're still dealing with one-sided. No, anybody's got to bring everything up to current code, and with this, I want to thank again, I want to thank everybody for coming out and seeing that we're one town, everybody's working together, and still everybody's got to go to planning, go to get approved, and I'm sure that the town board will make sure everybody does everything safe for everyone. Thank you. Good night.
I just want to take a second here. If there's anybody in the back that needs to take a seat for any reason, there's some seats here that you can go ahead and sit down. If you can't stand, or you don't want to stand, now's the time to go ahead and take a seat. And if you're on the list to speak, try to move forward, you know, as close as you can so that when we get to you, that you don't have so far to walk. Thank you. Joshua Druckmann.
Good evening, Josh Druckmann here, 23-year resident and business owner in the Town of Fallsburg. I want to talk about a specific issue regarding the proposed amendment, and then a bigger picture issue. One of the most dangerous parts of the proposed amendments is the addition of the vested rights clause 310-7 dot 11a3, quote, "All final and/or conditional final site plan and/or special use permit approvals shall be valid for a period not to exceed 24 months. If the 24-month period expires and no substantial construction has been initiated, or if any building permits which have been issued in accordance with the timeframe set forth have expired, the approval shall be null and void." The new part of the proposed amendment says, quote, "Vested rights to a site plan or special use permit shall be based on the following: reliance on a legally issued permit, the landowner effects substantial changes and incur substantial expenses to further the development, and the landowner's actions relying on the valid permits are so substantial that the municipal action results in serious loss rendering the improvements essentially valueless." Every landowner can prove a substantial expense related to a development. This would mean that every single developer could claim a vested right to extend their special use permits and site plan reviews well beyond the 24-month expiration period. This means that developments that were approved under far different circumstances would be able to continue building long after the conditions they were approved in were granted. The New York appellate division states that, quote, "There is no injury in fact within the zone of interest intended to be protected by the relevant zoning laws, ruling that losing a real estate purchase contract was not intended to be remedied by zoning code permissions." This is stating that losses are to be expected with any large development, and do not need to be accounted for in the zoning code. Please remove the vested rights clause, that's 310-7 dot 11a3. It is vital to remove this clause, it is not related to any necessary changes, it is a greedy grab by the developers, it has nothing to do with Arlopa or smart land use in this town. That's the small issue. The bigger picture issue, which is why I think so many people are here, it is not about this specific amendment, it is a bigger picture issue. I have a vibrant Airbnb business in the tradition of the Borscht Belt Tourism Hotel Town of Fallsburg tradition. So many guests come every year, they support the local Main Street businesses, they get out of the car, and they say, "What is going on in this town? What is up with all of these chain-linked fence, massive, vital-sided, illuminated, light-polluting developments?" And I send them, and they ask me where to go to experience nature, and I send them to other towns. That's why we're here. This town is not a quote-unquote goldmine, this is not a pad of resources. Just because people want to be here, it doesn't give them the right to just plunder this town.
Vivia Berghaus. This is Vivia Berghaus.
It's actually media?
Media, I'm sorry.
It's spelled like media, but it's media. I'm going to be a little selfish. My aunt, several years ago, lived with us, and she would say to me when going out to pick up the mail, "Oh my God, they come down that hill like bats out of hell." And I would say, "Stop being such a snob." Well, guess what? I don't walk on Main Street to go get my mail, because the traffic is bad enough right now, so I cannot imagine what it's going to be like in the future. The other issue that I have is deforestation. I now currently am living through the impact of one whole mansion site has removed trees, and so I am in what I call a valley. I get water when it rains or snows from uptown and from down the hill. So I cannot imagine that if there's going to be further deforestation, I'll be swimming to Main Street. The other issue is water, potable water. I'm really concerned about that, because I now drink bottled water. I'm concerned because there's going to be less water for people to use, potable water as well as water for bathing. And my final issue is, I haven't heard anybody talk about technology or phone service. I can't get more than one bar, and most of the time it says SOS only, so I cannot imagine how that's going to increase. Finally, I would like to see extra lighting, manga in Columbia Drive, so that when I go to get my mail, I can use the back road instead of Main Street. And I would like for everyone to follow the rules. A gentleman who just spoke, talked about having an Airbnb. I passed one in the summer with a young fellow sitting on the porch. When I happened to look up, I said, "Oh, I didn't realize that anyone lived here," because I had passed here quite a few times, and this can has been here for about a week, and he just sort of smiled at me. The next time I passed that house, there were 10 cans that were smashed and a pizza box. Don't come to Billyville and try to trash it.
Ari Duran-Hay.
Good evening, my name is Ari Duran-Hay, and I'm a longtime resident and taxpayer in the Town of Fallsburg. I would like to start by thanking the town board for hosting this meeting at such a wonderful venue, and coming by you all concerned citizens. As I've listened to the concerned voice here tonight, it's clear that the town's outdated and crumbling infrastructure is a price issue. I urge the board to continue planning for both short-term and long-term solutions to address this problem. Weaponizing those legitimate concerns won't benefit any of us. As a taxpayer resident, I'm asking the dedicated town board members to develop a short-term plan to replace and upgrade all crumbling pipes within the next 12 months. Given the mid-year average lifespan, pipes over 30 years old should be prioritized and upgraded. I believe this proactive approach will greatly benefit all of us. Thank you so much.
James Carr.
Good evening to the board, thanks for having us here. My name is James Carr. My wife and I are members of the Fallsburg Fishing and Boating Club, Pleasure Lake. As we are taxpayers here in Fallsburg, and therefore we have a vested interest in the events and procedures of the town. We take great pride in our stewardship of the lake and the beautiful natural environment found here. Therefore, it pains us greatly to learn that the town plans to change the town zoning code for properties currently zoned ag, and also to change the interpretation of certain properties, allowing for a dramatic expansion of these properties. These changes will place an extreme burden on local systems that are already overburdened by excessive development. Those systems include traffic on local roads, infrastructure, and first responding capacity, but most importantly, the burden on natural resources, specifically well water and sanitation. We have local farmers whose wells have run dry. The Town of Fallsburg has had numerous water emergencies over the past several years. Around Pleasure Lake, there are several large-scale developments either completed or under construction that are straining the local roads and natural resources. I am here to ask you today, when will this stop? It's time to have the courage to say enough is enough, and do your best to not allow these changes, and help maintain the existing character of Town Fallsburg. Thank you.
David Fager.
Hi, thank you to all the board members. I keep hearing concerns about water, sewer, and too much housing. But let's think about this, wouldn't it be great to have more people paying full taxes on their homes, while only using... Wouldn't it be great to have more people paying full taxes on their homes, while only using town services for two months? These summer residents aren't filling up our schools, they are not clogging our roads in the winter, and they are basically donating to our infrastructure fund for 10 months of the year. If anything, this is the perfect way to bring in revenue without overloading the system. So let's welcome them. After all, they are paying six times more in taxes than year-round residents, while using a fraction of the services. That's just common sense and simple math. Thank you all.
Carolyn Kelter.
Where's those tax dollars come from? That's where I want to know.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Kelter.
Please, shh, it's Carolyn's turn to speak. If you want to speak, you should have gotten on the list.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Kelter from La Cheltenham. I'm here to urge you to vote against the proposed zoning amendments that would classify religious camps to houses of worship. There is insignificant evidence to justify this change, and the consequences of adopting it could be significant to our town. According to Arlopa, the burden of proof lies with the party claiming their religious exercise is substantially burdened, and that standard has not been met here. The letter submitted for consideration fails to establish a clear functional connection between religious camps and houses of worship. While camps and houses of worship may involve faith-based activities, they are fundamentally different purposes. A house of worship is a designated place for religious observance, typically serving a specific congregation in a fixed location. Religious camps, on the other hand, are a commercial-style operation with broader outreach, drawing attendees well beyond our town. They involve lodging, recreation, and extended stays, elements that far exceed the scope of what a house of worship provides. I live on a lake, I see children, busloads of children come to our lake and play for hours, and they love that, you know, throwing their fellow campers in the lake. That is, you know, they are not studying all day, they're doing what campers do, a mixture of things. They're doing what campers do, a mixture of things, and some of it is recreation. The letter that the lawyers sent on behalf of the developers, the reason they said they're initiating these zoning amendments is essentially it would be their desire to be governed by the pre-2018 code provision with respect to camps. And that basically is just disregarding the comprehensive plan. And also quoted in that letter is, it should not be subjected to the zoning board of appeals. To me, this seems like the developers are looking for a loophole, just because, you know, developers, yes, they want to make a living, but they also do what they want to do: build. If this amendment passes, it could set a dangerous precedent, opening the door to more large-scale developments that will strain, as we know, our already strained infrastructure. Before any major zoning changes are considered, there must be a clear compelling evidence demonstrating its necessity and legal basis. The evidence has not been presented.
Thank you. Amy Chapman.
Hi, hi. Chapman Taylor, thank you. I own a home and property here in Hurleyville. Thank you for your service and thank you for letting me speak. I'm originally from Oregon, and after 10 years in the city, I don't take living up here or having access to this beautiful area, the rails to trails, the rivers and forests, for granted. It's important that we protect our natural resources and manage our use of them, so that all of us who live up here full-time, seasonally, who work here, and people who visit from the city or come up as course, can enjoy it now and for future generations. We have a responsibility to manage our natural spaces and resources responsibly and equitably, which is why I think all of us are here. I've been in Hurleyville since 2020, and before that, I've spent time upstate as well. Outside of any other issue, which I think is super important environmentally, like just at face value, but outside of any other issue, this proposed rezoning is a direct threat to my financial well-being and my continued ability to invest in this town. Really, it's a threat to my livelihood, and I know I'm not alone in that. Really simply, my property value will... It feels ridiculous to say, because it's...whatever, but my property value will go down if there's not water in my well. Like, how can I have children in a town that doesn't provide basic services and makes choices that negatively impact the health of our aquifer, or let sewer run into our rivers? Like, how can I continue to invest in and pay taxes in an area that doesn't listen to the needs of all of its constituents? And my taxes are actually really high in Fallsburg. How can I live in a town that doesn't have water in its fire hydrants? We've already seen droughts. We live in a really quickly changing world. Like, if there isn't water in its fire hydrants and we have a drought and there's a fire this season, what are you going to do? It seems negligent and irresponsible, at least. Finally, I've been told that a solution that you've come up with is to just replace the water and sewer lines, that there is enough water, but that the real issue is finding a way to move it through the town. If that is a solution, my question is, where will the money come from to make those updates? And how long will it take to make those updates? Seems like a lot of work, and it took a year to replace the bridge on my road. We know that the town needs to build an $80 million water and sewer plant and a $10 million shed for the DOT. Where's that money coming from? There clearly isn't a budget to overhaul our water system, so we ask that the town board please look at feasible solutions and create...
Jonathan Croll.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Croll, and I'm an attorney. And I would ask that the town board accept the changes that have been proposed here this evening. And while I've heard a lot of people come up here this evening and go into criticisms of what they feel the problems are, I think if they had listened to what was said at the beginning by the supervisor, which I thought was very well thought out, a lot of consideration went into that statement, one would see that this is not a blank check for people to come to this area and just start building or start developing, but rather, as I heard this evening, it's on a case-by-case basis. And I would believe, and I know it's the law, that a case-by-case basis means that every single project that comes in front of the town will be given due consideration based upon that particular project. And I think that's an important distinction, and I think that this proposal brings the town into 2025. While I think it's admirable that people want to preserve a lot of the great things that are here in Fallsburg, it doesn't take into consideration change and the modern world that we're living in. That doesn't mean that urban sprawl has to ensue in this area, but I think that what I'm hearing is smart growth and development is something that can occur here, but it can only occur with the changes that are being proposed here this evening. I also heard something that was very interesting and important. It's been repeated many times here this evening, and that's something about the water, something that all of us hold as dear, and it's the essential element of life is water, and something very important to all of us. So I believe that this has to be taken into consideration, but that doesn't mean as a rejection of what can be done in terms of the growth of this area. It is correct that people moving here only improves the neighborhood. It only improves the growth that exists here, and the reason that it does improve the neighborhood is because it brings not only revenue, but brings an ability to have different views, different types of people. I don't think that people here object to people who are different coming into the neighborhood, and I think that that's what's happening, and I think that should be encouraged. Lastly, I would just want to conclude by saying as follows. And if all the people feel it's important to kind of boo and scream, that if the residents...
Your time is over. William Demarest. Amy, since you're speaking, you can take this seat up here.
Good evening. William Demarest from Fallsgraph on behalf of Fallsburg Citizens for Sustainability. I just want to make some brief comments to supplement what I've already provided during the last public hearing and provided in writing to the board on these issues. It's my understanding that the board may be considering changes based upon public comment at some point to the proposed amendments, and we would hope that the board keeps open the public hearing or reopens the public hearing when that happens and those changes get circulated, so we can address those changes and any additional concerns. The primary concern I want to raise right now with the board is concerns about ambiguity, contradictions, inconsistencies in the current draft. The County 239 raised some of these very same concerns. Ambiguities in a zoning code are problematic, because ambiguities weigh against the municipality. So whatever the goal, the plan, the purpose of the zoning amendments is, if they're ambiguous, if they're contradictory, if they're inconsistent, a court can say, so what? We don't care about that, because that's not what you wrote, and we weigh it in favor of the property owner. So these amendments have numerous areas of inconsistency, ambiguity. One of the big areas is the house of worship and religious uses. Why are these being treated the way they are? It's unclear. The County 239 report says that. If they're intended to have all religious uses treated like a house of worship, I would respectfully say that's not required under the LUPA or under New York law, and goes a little too far. I think it contradicts what the supervisor said at the beginning in terms of those definition changes were not intended to allow new uses. Respectfully, uses that would qualify as religious use that previously did not qualify and are non-conforming now become conforming as a house of worship. And they are subject to the bulk requirements, not of what use they previously were classified as, but as a house of worship. The impacts of house of worship are going to be different from, for instance, a religious retreat. The bulk requirements can and should reflect that. Additionally, concerns about the changes to nonconformities section is very inconsistent. There was a statement that that wasn't intended to allow for additional dwellings. Respectfully, the code as proposed amended doesn't clearly prohibit that. And without clearly prohibiting that, it can potentially allow for that to happen, and it opens the town to litigation from those who would like to add more dwellings. But it's also important to remember, dwellings, even if you're not adding dwellings, additional floor room can mean more bedrooms. And when we're talking about water usage, sewer, it's bedrooms that matter. That's how we determine it. So I would encourage the town not to trade one arm for another.
Thank you. Gabe Alphard.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to us. My name is Sebastian Delmont. I live outside of the Town of Woodbridge with my family. And today, I want to talk about a couple of things in particular, in the hopes that the board will oppose the zoning amendments. First, the amendments will allow bungalow colonies to be converted to year-round residents without requiring planning board approval. This means there will be no assessment of environmental impact as required by the State Environmental Quality Preview Act, or et cetera. It also means that town will lose an important tool to ensure responsible growth that aligns to environmental and community standards, or a comprehensive plan, as the law requires, tools needed to manage the impact on our water supplies, our sewers, our roads, and other surfaces. Second, it introduces a deeply troubling provision that prohibits the planning board from denying or limiting expansion if a religious use is cited. We fully respect and embrace religious institutions and their role in our community, but we cannot create a legal loophole where any proposed development could claim religious use and bypass essential planning oversight. The zoning laws exist to ensure balanced, well-planned, and sustainable development. These amendments would undermine that purpose, allowing unchecked growth that could negatively impact both residents and the town's infrastructure. We're making an amendment as a stopgap measure, and we're tying the board's hands to take any control and any oversight of environmental impact and to enforce what the law requires with the comprehensive plan. We are doing that by the argument that we need to comply with our LUPA, but it does not comply with our LUPA. And in turn, it opens the door for more lawsuits and more problems. The county suggests we reject this amendment. An overwhelming number of the citizens here tonight reject this amendment. I urge the board to do the same. Thank you.
Annie Maurer.
Good evening. My name is Annie Maurer, and I'm a resident of South Fallsburg for the last 11 years. I'm raising my family here, and so this topic is very important to me and the future of my family. I'm concerned about contradictions in the proposed zoning amendments, which seem to have not been well-written. And William Demarest just spoke to us, so I'll reiterate some of what he said. A letter from William Demarest Esquire submitted to the town on February 4, 2025 states, "The proposed amendments create ambiguities and inconsistencies in the zoning code." Additionally, the county's 239 review states, "A complete rewrite of the definition section would allow the town to reduce the amount of potentially conflicting definitions that result in arbitrary permitting." Basically, what I understand the county is saying is that the definitions in the proposed amendments, as they are currently written, are unclear, and therefore would leave the town more vulnerable to legal issues in the future. I'm not clear how it is legal to pass amendments that are not coherent and that contain contradictions. Regardless of what is being proposed, it seems that it would be a basic requirement that the definitions are clear and understandable. Significant revisions are required to the content of these amendments and to how they are written for them to even be considered. I encourage the town to create a roundtable of many voices to come together to redraft any zoning amendments in coherent terms and in a transparent way. Thank you very much.
Gabriella Nolan.
It feels like I'm walking up to a three-point bar. Jesus. Hello, my name is Gabriella Nolan. I'm a 25-year resident of the Town of Fallsburg. I may not be a product of the school system, but I am a product of liberties. I left this county and this town to earn a Bachelor of Science in Geological Sciences, a Bachelor in Arch and Political Science. I then went on to Tufts University in Boston, where I earned my Master of Science in Environmental Policy and Planning. I have now come back, and I'm here to make the county better. The issues I have here are with procedure. With the 239 submitted to the county, you've missed some parts to correctly evaluate the environmental impacts that may have within these amendments. As many have already stated, environmental impacts are very important. Environmental impacts not only affect the way that we live, but the wildlife around us. I would like to push and urge the town, while not as bad as Monticello's plan that was done in 1999, a lot has changed since COVID. Our housing has changed, our water uses has changed, our infrastructure has changed. Our transportation also has changed. I urge the town to withdraw these changes until a full comprehensive study can be done. Comprehensive means that everyone is involved. We take input from all sectors and all communities, not only from our residents, but our commercial and short-term residents as well. Infrastructure is an issue here. While, yes, resorts were here. I love exploring. I knew the Girl Singers before it was taken down. That was a travel spot. But with this infrastructure, that the resorts that used to be here is gone, it no longer can support. Our population has grown, our development pattern is scattered. We need to fully understand the implications of expanded and increased density of development. Until we can do that, the zoning amendments should not be approved. Zoning is not only done to understand the needs of the people, but also the needs of the land. We cannot build in places where we cannot live. Where there is no water, there is no people, there is no life. As far as creating a streamlined process for approvals, I support it. It is important to remove red tape in order to create sustainable and important development that the town needs. We need a housing study, we need a transportation study, we need an educational study, we need an understanding of what our cultural and social needs are, as well as broadband and aquifer and wetland recharge rates. I know that the DEC has recently redone their wetlands. I urge the town to consider what those maps mean and where they will be impacted. So I hope that you will take our words into consideration, and I thank you all for sitting before us today.
I just want to take another second. Is everybody okay? Does anybody need to have a seat? Because we do have some seats. Okay? So if anybody needs a seat, they got places over here. Jim Sullivan.
Hello, my name is Jim Sullivan. In '87, my wife and I moved to Hurleyville because of the affordability, the beauty, and the town water and sewer, as I knew nothing about wells and septic. I've been a firefighter and a fire commissioner most of the time while working at fires. I have seen town fire hydrants not working due to a lack of town maintenance, and working fires is not the time to discover those issues. About a year ago, Mike Ben Simon met with myself and Fire Chief Charlie Payne regarding the ongoing hydrant issues. As a result of that meeting, a hydrant on Columbia Hill was fixed after 20 years. I would like to take... I would like to take a moment to thank... I would like to take a moment to thank Mike for that, and that you actually followed through, because nobody ever did. That's the past. Currently, there is literally a tree stick in a hole at the water tank in Hurleville in that direction on the hill. Include the frequent water main breaks. We had one the past week, so right on the street. And we all have damn good reasons to be concerned. Currently, the Hurleville Fire District is taking action with the town and the county to install dry hydrants in several locations. It's an attempt to mitigate the ongoing issues of now we're running out of water in the summer. Also organized is a wide-range water tanker task force, again, to try to mitigate this issue. Let me get this, sorry, I'm off task here. Regarding this proposal and the clear disapproval of the county, town board was sent a document referring to their 239 and in reference to this amendment, and it says, "The adoption of the proposed zoning code will have both immediate and long-term effects by: a) allowing for interpretation which could permit or restrict certain uses counter to both the intent of the proposal and the town comprehensive plan; b) allowing uncontrolled expansion of nonconforming uses; c) not providing clear guidelines for density." As noted in that early February email to you guys, neither the New York State nor federal law mandate the proposed changes to nonconforming residential uses. And I don't know, and we no longer have the luxury for short-term vision. Thank you.
Lindsay Delmont. Good evening. My name is Lindsay, and I live in Hurleville. There is major competition for groundwater in this area. The town is seeking additional wells to increase their public water supply. Major projects requiring their own public water supply are looking for water. Every development, large or small, as well as individual homeowners on private wells are looking for water. Everybody is competing for the same finite resource. Residents on both town waters and private wells have experienced frequent water loss over the years as development has continued to expand throughout the area. These are well-documented occurrences which have impacted individual homes, firefighting capabilities, and resulted in water restrictions during summer seasons. There has been no outreach from the town to individual well owners to address the causes of the water loss. The town of Fallsburg does not monitor water usage outside of its public water supply. The town does not track the impacts on the water tables from the existing or proposed developments drawing from the private wells. This information needs to be organized for the town, county, regional, and state legislators who rely on this data to develop sensible guidelines and policies for expanding development. For high-frequency projects, like the many that are currently before the town, the New York State Department of Health recommends using a higher water usage rate than the standard of 110 gallons per day per one-to-two-person bedroom. High frequency is declined as more than two people per bedroom. Any dwelling that has more than one bunk bed or more than two-bedroom room needs to be evaluated at a higher water usage rate. Otherwise, the town will perpetually undercalculate its water needs. Since the town does monitor water usage within public water supply districts, are water usage records being accurately reported by the town? I ask this because the town has stated in their annual water quality report from 2015 to 2023 that the population has remained unchanged for the past eight years. Although the town reported an additional 2,500 connections to the town water supply in the same document, no additional residents, but 2,500 new services? How many additional private wells drawing from the same water tables came online during that same time period? Nobody's tracking that. When reporting to Delaware River Basin Commission, the town showed that there was a reduction of 202 services between 2015 and 2021 dockets. If these documents are inaccurately stating information, where does this leave the town? These are legal documents that the town submitted to an agency who is supposed to be responsible for approving water supply expansion. As published in the Fallsburg Annual Water Quality Report, in 2020, 68 million gallons of water went unaccounted for, meaning this is water that was not delivered to customers, used for firefighting, flushing mains, or maintenance. This is water that was lost. This is 12% of the overall water produced by a town's public water supply. In 2022, the town remedy is lost to less than 3 million gallons. However, one year later, the water loss more than doubled.
Thank you. Annie Maworski.
Hi, I'm Annie Maworski. I live in Hurleville. My comments concern the Delaware River Basin Commission's mandate to the town of Fallsburg, which is due five days from now and remains unmet by the town as of today. The town of Fallsburg is part of the Delaware River Basin, which includes the entire 197-mile non-titled Delaware River from Hancock, New York to Trenton, New Jersey, and is considered special protection waters. 75% of this area is also included in the National Well and Scenic River System. Since 1961, when the last Sullivan County Act for Study was done, the DRBC has managed the Special Protection Waters Program. Their goal is to ensure that water quality and quantity is not degrading over time and remains clean, and as such, they control water allocations. All communities in this watershed must apply to DRBC for any increase in water allocations or for the drilling of new wells for the town's public water district. Fallsburg applied in 2013, 15, and 21, each time with the determination by the town that the capacity in their sources was sufficient to meet the 10-year projected average daily demand of the system. However, the findings of DRBC in the most recent request by the town in 21 found that Fallsburg's peak day and monthly demands exceed the system's combined well capacity and the allocation approved in this docket. As such, the town, on the approval date of the docket, March 9th, 2022, was required to conduct and submit a groundwater availability assessment to DRBC due by Sunday, March 9th, 2025. This assessment must include information related to the extent and water supply capability of the aquifer, a hydrologic water budget, updated water demand projections, and a plan and schedule of development of additional water sources determined to be necessary to meet the future water demands. As of today, the town has not done this assessment to justify increased water allocations, putting all of the existing and proposed water users at risk. And frankly, by virtue of requesting the increase and then ignoring the condition required by DRBC, the town is admitting it does not have sufficient water resources, especially as we approach peak summer season. We also do not know if the annual calendar year water audits due every March 31st have been submitted by the town to DRBC as required. Because of these critical water concerns, no zoning changes or comprehensive plan update should be made without having this critical information on water availability, current use, and projected needs. No site plans, special use permits, or subdivisions that require newer expanded water resources should even be considered, let alone approved without this information. We need a moratorium. The public hearing and comment period must remain open until this assessment is completed, shared with DRBC, the county, New York State DEC, New York State Department of Health, and made available to the public. Thank you.
Jerry Skoda. Say it again. Jerry Skoda.
Good evening. Town board members, employees, attendees. I'm Jerry Skoda. I'm a farmer in the town of Fallsburg. I served on the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, and I can tell you that a shul was not mentioned as a preferred use when we completed that plan. It was added after the fact. I sent a letter with some of my concerns, and I'm not going to read that because it does touch on quite a few of the concerns I have. But I do want to comment on a couple of things, and that is that high-density housing should never be allowed in an area in the town of Fallsburg that does not have sewer and water plants or capabilities. Never. And that's not a religious issue either. That's common sense. It's soil capacity issues with sewers and the availability of well water, which is limited gallons per minute. You don't put high-density housing in open space and agricultural zones. And our sewer and water districts are out of control. Read the paragraph at the beginning of the zoning and ZPA meetings. It says that no further action will be taken, in some words, by this board until we have done a complete job looking at our sewer and water facilities. Doesn't that tell you that we have a real problem? And let's admit it, and let's take care of it before we expand any additional uses. I'd like to address the tax issue, because I haven't heard anybody mention that in cost of services. Looking around and seeing all the construction, you would think that there would be an increased assessment in the town of Fallsburg. There's one big problem. Residential construction does not lower taxes. In fact, every dollar of taxes that houses create costs $1.36 in services. And the problem in Fallsburg is worse. Much of the construction is either religious exempt from taxes or gets a 50% condominium reduction in their recession. It's much easier to avoid problems than the correct.
Thank you, Jerry. So the next person to speak is Elaine Hutchins. Elaine had to leave. Elaine had to leave. So I'll be providing the town board with what she gave me as a letter, like the letters that most of you had sent in. So the next person to speak is Lucinda Nolan.
Good evening. My name is Lucinda Nolan, and I own and reside at 65 Lakeside Drive and on 69 Lakeside Drive. I understand the desire to visit and develop. I come from Buffalo, New York, and at this point in my life, I have lived here in the Catskills for most of my life, 31 years. And I love my home where I can swim and boat in Loch Sheldon Creek. Unless a full comprehensive understanding of our beautiful resources is taken, we will lose them. Unless we take stock of our current social needs, our community shall be divided. Unless we don't prepare and assess the water, sewer, and road infrastructure, it will crumble. Unless we do not follow development evaluation processes, our beautiful area will suffer. The lake water will be polluted, the trees removed, and wildlife displaced. Unless someone like you cares a lot, nothing will change. It will not.
The next person is Rachel Precious.
Good evening. Thank you. Proposed amendments to Section 310, 5.4 of the town code titled "Environmental Constraints Affecting Permitted Density Is Unclear and Poorly Written." Per the county's review, the language changes to the amendments which replaces lock coverage with developmental yield density creates contradictions, especially to the issue of land to be developed at what slopage in these amendments. In the town code, the town code currently states that for new developments, hilly terrain can be developed: a) for residentially zoned properties at slopes over 20% and b) for non-residential zone properties sloped over 15%. The proposed amendments would change both of these clauses to simply state for all zoned properties sloped over 25%. My question to the town board is how does this impact emergency vehicles and our community's safety? What slope accommodates emergency vehicles that are not meant for our hills? Fire trucks have a large back bumper. Are the inclines they can traverse being considered? This was verified by the Hurleville Fire Department, who sent images of their vehicles with bumpers that cannot access slopes over 25%. With this information alone, this is a real fire safety concern for our residences and businesses alike. Given these issues here, how can these proposed amendments be checked and counter-checked in transparent ways? I suggest any future code changes are written by a group of people and counter-checked with emergency safety professionals to ensure transparency and the safety of all community members, our first responders, servicemen and women, residents, and businesses. Also, accounting in advance for the impact of potential increased development and high season times like summer, when the population and the emergency needs are also dramatically increasing. I would also urge the board to respectfully please look at the waste management, not just of the sewage and the water treatment, but of the waste that is accumulating on our streets, especially in the summer months, and is being dumped in on the Caliport areas like our beautiful forests and is reaching into the land. I am not alone in driving through our streets that suddenly smell like sewage backing up and wondering, where is that coming from and how is that affecting our community and our environment? Thank you so much.
James LaBary.
Mr. Supervisor, and that was the board. At the last public hearing on this issue, some of you were ready to vote yes on the proposed changes that very night. Fortunately for someone in this room, fortunately for everyone in this room, you have agreed to give us another amendment. In the last 30 days, we've all had a chance to read the town's proposed ordinance changes, and more recently, the county's 239. And you, the board, have all had an opportunity to read all of the letters you received and hear the concerns of your residents here in this town, the people who voted for you. Most of all, most if not all of the changes in the zoning ordinance were written before the county issued their 239. 239s are the only method counties have to express their concerns when a town chooses to make major changes to their zoning ordinances, particularly after a town's comprehensive plan is approved. This town board should care about what the county's 239 expresses, because what this town board does with their zoning ordinance will, if not sooner, later, affect all the towns in the county. You all need to have a complete understanding of what you are about to do and the effects that it's going to have long-term. I respectfully request that this board take the necessary time to continue getting all of the input about each of the proposed zoning ordinance changes from all of residents, and especially some of those who were not able to attend tonight. I suggest perhaps you might consider appointing a committee comprised of residents on both sides of the issue. Hopefully, from what you might achieve from learning what everybody has to think concerning all of these different issues, you'll be able to better make the decision that you're going to have to be making. Remember, once you ring the bell, you can't unring it. Thank you.
Carlos Haller.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carlos Solis Kaiser. I live in Mountaindale. Thanks for your time and attention. And if you...
what this town board does with their zoning ordinance will, if not sooner, later, affect all the towns in the county. You all need to have a complete understanding of what you are about to do and the effects that it's going to have long term. I respectfully request that this board take the necessary time to continue getting all of the input about each of the proposed zoning ordinance changes from all the residents and especially some of those who were not able to attend tonight. I suggest perhaps you might consider appointing a committee comprised of residents on both sides of the issue. Hopefully, from what you might achieve from learning what everybody has to think concerning all of these different issues, you'll be able to better make the decision that you're going to have to be making. Remember, once you ring the bell, you can't unring it. Thank you.
Carlos Haller.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carlos Solis Kaiser. I live in Mountain Dale. Thanks for your time and attention and opinions tonight. I'm here to strongly oppose the overly broad changes that would allow development without proper oversight. Special permits are essential tools for responsible growth, ensuring that developments are evaluated for their impact on our community. Recently, two of our neighbors' wells ran dry, troubling sign of a strain on our shared resources. I worry that we could be next. With increasing fire risk and a changing climate, water access, fire response, and overall infrastructure capacity must be central to any planning decisions. Without careful oversight, we risk putting both our homes and our community in jeopardy. It's critical that we avoid unintended loopholes that could lead to out-of-control growth. Fallsburg's historic character and environmental significance as part of an otherwise very dense northeast urban corridor depend on balanced, well-planned growth. While I support building more affordable housing in our community, it must be guided by thoughtful planning. I strongly believe that good town planning creates good neighbors. I urge the board to preserve the qualities that make Fallsburg unique. Thanks for your time.
And Ruth.
Hi, my name is Andy Ruth. I'm a full-time resident of Fallsburg for five years. I want to address something that almost everyone who supports these amendments brought up at the last public hearing, which is the Aruppa case in Walorsing. Amendments to Walorsing's zoning code were found to discriminate against religious entities and were therefore in violation of Aruppa. And many have argued that if Fallsburg doesn't make drastic changes to our zoning code, we will be embroiled in a similar legal battle. We've heard over and over again that we must put responsible growth aside, abandon the rural character of our town, and ignore our water crisis in order to comply with Aruppa. The reality is that the Walorsing case included clearly egregious examples of zoning discrimination against religious entities, but nothing like that exists in the Fallsburg code. Essentially, those who are interested in unchecked development and expansion are using the Walorsing case as a false threat to scare our town board into enacting their agenda. In Walorsing, the legal challenges arose because zoning laws restricted religious land use explicitly and unfairly, making it difficult for religious camps to expand or operate. However, in Fallsburg, all camps are subject to the same regulations regardless of religious affiliation. In Walorsing, religious camps had to comply with different building and fencing requirements than non-religious ones. No such distinction exists in the Fallsburg code, which means that Fallsburg does not single out religious institutions for different treatment. It applies strict, uniform rules to all camps. Another major concern in Walorsing was that zoning laws were allegedly used to block religious camps without clear public safety justification. Fallsburg's code, however, prioritizes fire building safety across the board. Fallsburg's current approach treats religious land uses the same as secular ones, which was not the case in Walorsing. Currently, in Fallsburg, bungalow colonies are not treated as religious institutions, ensuring no special exemptions or burdens. All non-conforming uses follow the same rules, preventing claims of religious discrimination. Fire safety and environmental concerns are enforced fairly, protecting public welfare without targeting specific groups. Given these differences, Fallsburg's zoning code is not vulnerable to Aruppa and the issues addressed in the Walorsing case do not apply. I want to finish by saying that sustainability is not just a buzzword, it's not a trend, and it's not, as some have suggested, a weapon to be used in service of discrimination. Sustainability is about how much growth and at what pace the land and our township can support. The current rate of growth is simply not sustainable. That's not a judgment call, it's just a fact. We are running out of water. My wife and I are expecting our first child of the month and we're building a new home in Woodbridge. We want our new house to be our forever home and we want to raise our child here in Fallsburg. We won't be able to do that if our wells run dry because our aquifer is overburdened. We are calling on you, members of the town board, to do the right thing and steward our town.
Thank you.
We covered a lot of stuff tonight. I'm not going to repeat it. I wanted to bring up a couple of subjects. One of them is land disturbance. One of the things that the law should be put into effect that if the developer does want to do the expense of going through the planning board process, which we know can take a year or two years, that's up to him. Requesting that he's allowed to put his roads in to start his development should not be permitted at all. I know a couple of developments where this was done, the project folded, in some cases we have a swath of property now that was denuded. It took a while for that to come back. The other problem we have is district extensions. I know that in the past, boards gave sewer and water district extensions that shouldn't have been granted. I think from this point on, I was speaking to Mike, he said the current board has not granted any and you should not grant any in the future until we have substantial water and sewer durability. That's one stop that you can put into effect, that you have control over. The whole idea about if the developer comes to you or to the planning board and he says, listen, I've got my tentative approvals, I know you don't have water and sewer, but I want to put in a bunch of units at my own financial risk. What that does is it puts him in an advantage of vested rights. I heard that mentioned a little earlier and there's something in the code about that. The problem with vested rights is, and it's been proven before in court, that once a developer expends his money on the property, not on paper, he can beat us in court and say, well, I spent all this money, even though he wrote the agreement that I'm doing it at my own cost. That's baloney. The bottom line is, nothing should be granted to any development until you know you have sewer and water and not to say, okay, we'll let you do something over here, but that's it. It should be zero disturbance, zero this, zero that. They're concerned about showing their future buyers, oh yeah, we're working on something. We have something to show the public. That's not our problem, that's their problem. If they want to do something, let them spend money on renderings and paper and whatever else. Don't put it on our backs. That's a stopgap that you guys can control. If it's not in the zoning, it could be put in the zoning code. I don't want to repeat everything that was said about where we live. We all know where we live, that's why we're here. We don't want disturbed anymore. I do know that there are developer fees that if a guy is building a certain amount of you, let me state that over. I know that if a guy is doing a finished basement in development, he has to pay a certain amount per bedroom, which is great, except when he calls the bedroom a study, when he calls it a den, that's a bit of a loophole. I'm probably cutting my nose off by talking about this because that's part of my business. But I do know there has to be a way to stop that. I know.
Thank you. Adam Lee.
Good evening. My name's Adam Katschak. I've lived in Hurleyville since nineteen-seventy-seven. Came up here for a better life, quieter life, away from the city, okay? And what I'm seeing now is the corral is full. And we can't sustain more livestock, so to speak. Don't take offense to that. But we can make the corral bigger, but we got to do it smartly. And by doing it smartly, we have to plan this out. Before I get to the end, I want to implore you to vote this thing down. Because anybody that thinks that Aruppa has anything to do, religion has its own entity. It has nothing to do with building permits, okay? And that's just a trump card they're playing to try and get what they want done. And it's BS. It's not to do with any, it's in God we trust. People believe differently, that's their way. But this is not the way we should be doing it. You know how we should do it, folks? And I'm not telling you what to do. Common sense. Use common sense and look at the people that live here, that have worked here, that have built this community, that have come here. I've been here for over fifty years. I drilled my own well, I have my own septic because I knew progress was coming. And now progress is here, our water is yellow, our sewer plant's backed up. And I know when you buy a place or build a place in Fallsburg, correct me if I'm wrong, you can't guarantee they're going to get water. Water is, you can't put out a fire, Roger. Am I right or wrong without water? You got to have water and we don't have it. And this is not progress. This is eroding our progress for the people that came here for a better way of life, that want to live and enjoy the country like I do. I look out my window every morning and I thank God, say a prayer, because I see the deer and the turkey and I go fishing in my street. I'm lucky. You're damn right I'm lucky and I'm proud of it and I'm not going to let anybody take it away. Progress is great, but not for a community like this. Looking in Hurleyville at the top of the hill, they wanted to put four hundred homes in. You know why they stopped? I believe it's because they don't have the water. So I would implore you to vote this down. It's the people living here that count. Okay? Don't further erode our way of life because they've just about done that. I've almost been hit twice going to my mailbox. Traffic's backed up from Liberty to Loch Sheldrick during the summer. You can't get through woodburns, you can't go past clutches, all the army barracks are there. The people are crossing in the hundreds. We have a sheriff's deputy directing traffic. Why? He should be out fighting crime, not directing.
Thank you. Kent Finley.
Well, my name's Kent Finley, but I'm speaking on behalf of Brett Bud here at Lee's. Hello, I'm Brett Bud from Justice Farms. I'm speaking tonight to share the perspective that this law needs a total re-rap. Additionally, to ensure all are aware of the two-thirty-nine review provided by the county that identifies many serious flaws in the law. We need to form a working group that includes local citizens. We need a new set of lawyers representing the town. Through the two-thirty-nine process, it has been uncovered that there are some very basic legal mistakes being made. Two-thirty-nine in two states is currently written. The changes could violate Religious Uses and Institutions Person's Act. The town has stated that the reason for the proposed zoning changes is to bring our zoning law in compliance with Aruppa. It is shocking to me that the document the town is putting forward will not fill this charge. It is also clear to me, speaking with town residents, that many believe the lawyers involved here are tainted by conflicts of interest. This is a perfect opportunity for the town to get rid of the current council and hire lawyers that are trained and have defended against Aruppa lawsuits. It is my understanding that two individuals on this board literally vote to mirror another member. I would like to speak to them directly. It is important for you to recognize your charge and your responsibility to the residents of this town. I urge you to think for yourself because the person you're following is not paying attention. They would have us all believe that this is just a nothing burger. The two-thirty-nine review proves otherwise. Additionally, the town has complete disregard for our aquifer. As a small organic farmer, it is my personal mission to ensure these precious resources are protected and cared for. If we do not have respect for the way the water system works, then nobody will have water, not the developers, not the town board, and none of you. There are already approved developments on DEC-recognized wetlands in this town. I would propose the board, please explain the logic for approving these developments. What research have you done to ensure the aquifer can continue to meet our needs? I would ask the same questions regarding our power grid, our cell towers, our town water infrastructure, our town sewer and fire access. I would like to thank each of you for showing up today. Nobody wants to be here, but it's incredibly valuable that you made this commitment. Please stay tuned in and present. After all, if you weren't showing up, this law would already have been enacted with all of its enormous flaws. Obviously, we have to look out for ourselves.
David Katz.
Thank you. My wife and I are full-time residents of Fallsburg and I'm speaking on behalf of not only our family, but Fallsburg Citizens for Sustainability, a grassroots group which is focused on sustainable development here in Fallsburg and in surrounding communities. I'd like everyone to be aware that the board has now received two very detailed, comprehensive evaluations of the proposed zoning amendments. One was this county's scathing disapproval of the amendments under the two-thirty-nine review. And the other was a very comprehensive evaluation that William Demarest alluded to earlier on legal policy and procedural flaws with the amendments created by the lawyers at Rock Fallsburg, which has one of the leading zoning and land use groups in this country. Based on these analyses, it's clear that the proposed zoning changes must be voted down on multiple serious grounds, which both of these reports have highlighted. Briefly, these include gross procedural deficiencies, particularly regarding Sikh as we've heard. Number two, absence of legal justifications in the case of claims under Aruppa, specifically a demonstration of a substantial burden on the free exercise of religion as required under Aruppa that has not been demonstrated. And I have argued that differences in setback do not meet that bar. Therefore, the threat of lawsuits, which Supervisor Ben Simone told us was what motivated these amendments under Aruppa, the threat of lawsuits under Aruppa simply does not hold water. Third, there are multiple significant risks of legal liability for the town, which we've heard about. Four, there's radical misalignment with the town comprehensive plan, which the board is obligated to follow in letter and intent. Number five, both of these evaluations have pointed out bad policy, particularly regarding major negative consequences for the availability and quality of critical resources such as water. And six, environmental degradation, particularly in areas currently protected from high-density development. And to say that the expansions and non-conforming uses are only about existing structures, not building new structures, is really disingenuous. Because if you increase the footprint of even existing structures by fifty percent and allow for more people, you're disingenuous.
Nate Allman.
Gil. I appreciate you having me up here tonight. I just want to say I'm a visiting neighbor. I'm also a transplant here in New York, as we call it. I'm from the good state of Maine. We're a very rural state. We have a lot of farms up there. Southern Maine's obviously getting a little populated by Massachussetts and New Yorkers. I just want to let you know I am your neighbor coming from Mametown in Worksboro. I think the writing is on the wall for all of you sitting up there right now. I am a farmer down there. The environmental impact with the water, the sewage, and also, I suggest you get in the car tomorrow, take a drive down to Bloomberg, drive through there, see the debris piling up, infesting in the waters. And I am a religious man. So the lawyers out there that want to use that as a crutch, they're wrong. So God help you to make the right choices for this community. God bless.
Sharon Maxwell.
Good evening, Ward. Thank you for having us here. Thank you for listening to these important things. My name's Sharon Maxwell. I'm a clinical psychologist. I live and work in South Fallsburg. I'm usually working right now, but I'm not because this is very important to me. I love South Fallsburg. I love the lakes, I love the rural community. I live two doors down from my grandchildren. I want them to love this community. I want them to grow up in a rural, rustic community where they can appreciate nature and have clean water to drink. I want to address an important legal principle that directly applies to why the town board should not approve the proposed amendments. Courts have consistently ruled that when compelling government interest is at stake, it can supersede claims of substantial burden in the Aruppa suits. it can supersede claims of substantial burden in the Arloopa suits. One such compelling interest recognized by the courts includes preserving the rural and rustic character of a town. A key case that illustrates this is called Eagle Cove Camp and Conference Center versus Town of Utero. In that case, the court upheld the town's right to enforce zoning regulations designed to maintain its rural identity, even when those regulations were challenged on the basis of religious exercise. The court determined that the town's interest in preserving its rural character was a legitimate and compelling governmental objective. This precedent reinforces that our town has both the legal right and the responsibility to uphold its planning and zoning decisions in a way that protects the unique rural character of our community. It's not just a matter of preference. It is a legally recognized interest that the courts have upheld time and again. As we move forward, I urge the board to remain steadfast in defending our town's values and identity, knowing that the law is on our side. Please do not approve the amendments. And please keep these public hearings open so that we can all see and hear what is going on. Thank you.
Steve Marshall.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Stephen Barshov. I'm an attorney. I'm here representing J C C of Sullivan County. And I'm the attorney who litigated the Tolmentora or Morsia case against the town of Z B A of Lowercy. So a lot of the things that you've been told tonight are just simply factually incorrect. So a little bit of education about what actually happened in that lawsuit. In that lawsuit, there was an administrative determination that was upheld by the Z B A that the use of the property, which was for religious educational purposes, was not a religious use. The argument that was made was, oh, you have to separate it out. If they're teaching, it's a school. If they're there for a dormitory, it's a dormitory. That, all of that is untrue. The law in New York for well over a century has been that all of those uses are religious uses, not with the Orthodox Jewish community only, but Catholic churches, convents, all kinds, Muslim retreats, everything. That is what a religious use is. So when I came into the town of Fallsburg representing an applicant, I provided a memo of law that said, your zoning code, whatever it says, this is a religious use if it is providing religious education as a physical activity over the summer. The zoning code didn't match that. So what I said was, I don't want to sue you. I don't want to bring an Arloopa case. I don't want to see you in court like the town of Highland is now, who I had to sue, because they did what Lowercy did. And the federal judge just the other day said that you do the same thing, there's an Arloopa claim. Now, I don't want to do that to Fallsburg. So what Fallsburg did was Fallsburg demanded the proposed amendments to its zoning code in order to match what the law requires. And that's what the definitions are designed to address. Now, I'll take a look at the language that's in those definitions and if there's some ambiguity, if there's some problem. I would love to see the town board address it, because it should be done properly. So yes, the town board should hold open this public hearing, allow written comments to be submitted. I want to address the 239 review, which I believe on Arloopa is fundamentally flawed. This is written by a planner, not by a lawyer, someone who does not understand Arloopa and does not understand how these things work. I wish I could go on longer. I have only 38 more seconds. So what I am going to say to you is, I will submit in detail to you exactly why the proposed amendments comply with Arloopa, why what you're doing is completely correct in accordance with the law, and will avoid litigation, not bring it on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person is Denise Sullivan. Be careful, Denise, he's moving that for you.
Hi. My name is Denise Sullivan. My husband and I moved to Hurleyville in 1987. I really appreciate the work of the town board, and I thank you for stepping back, doing due diligence, and conducting public hearings regarding the proposed zoning amendments. Almost 40 years ago in June, we stood smack in the middle of Main Street here, talking to a realtor for quite some time, and not one car drove by. We closed that deal, bought a house with good bones and town water and sewer service. We lived in a tent for 10 days to clean it out and make it habitable, and then renovated that house where we still live. Over the past 24 years, we bought and renovated four other houses on our street, offering affordable and reliable rental housing within walking distance to Main Street businesses. That's a goal in this county. Today, Hurleyville is one of the busiest and most vibrant year-round hamlets in Sullivan County. With the help of Sullivan Renaissance, we created a group of Hurleyville volunteers that took advantage of grants and technical assistance that helped us build a sense of place with welcome signs, Fireman's Park just outside this building, a community gateway by the Sullivan O N W rail trail, countless flower barrels, and many other projects. We formed a not-for-profit beautification and community development organization that's still active today, supporting the likes of the Hurleyville Art Center, the Sullivan County Museum, and businesses in the hamlet. We love our hamlet, and I'm very concerned about the current proposed zoning amendments. In 2018, when the town comprehensive plan was rewritten, one of the concerns identified by the town of Fallsburg was, and I quote, "the inability of the town's existing infrastructure, including roads, water, and sewer, to handle the peak demands placed on these systems in the summer months." That was seven years ago, and yet large developments have been allowed to be built continuously. Our water system is old and stressed. In the last five years, water main breaks have become a regular problem in this hamlet. We had four water main breaks in four months and are on our tiny dead-end street alone in 2023. Brand-new businesses here have had to deal with flooded buildings due to Main Street water main breaks. And there was a break last week right on the corner outside this building. We are regularly asked to limit our water usage in the summer due to high demand. Residents not tied to the water system have wells that have been running dry for years. Why is the town board even entertaining the expansion of high-density housing areas when firefighting and sewer problems are now annual occurrences throughout the town? These zoning amendments will allow for increased density of houses that will continue to tax our crumbling infrastructure and encourage overdevelopment. They will also prohibit the planning board's ability to deny or limit expansion. The unintended consequences will be more fires and less water to fight the wave. These amendments would work against the goals of the town's comprehensive plan. Even Sullivan County, in its 239 review of these amendments, has advised against these changes. Please listen to them and do not make these changes.
I think Adrian Cantel left, but I'm gonna call him. Adrian Cantel? Thanks, Denise. Okay. Andrew Faust.
Thank you all. I must be a little exhausted, that's intense. A lot of folks have said a lot of things that needed resetting. A lot of people who live here have said things that I would simply add to and say limits to growth are a challenge that all planning boards are dealing with. And a moratorium on growth, as it's called for by one individual, I think is the best straightforward language that I can support and endorse. I am an ecological planner and designer. I teach here in Hurleyville at C C H S. I also run a farm and educational center in Ellenville. Aquifers do not pay attention to municipal boundaries. This planning board, knowing the nature of your aquifer, is clearly essential homework before any further growth is approved. It is also an obvious fact that we live in a social fabric of a community and a planning board who are dealing with pressures that are not unique to this community. The challenge that this board faces is a very real challenge, and it's one that every citizen in the United States faces, every person on this planet. In fact, I think it's important to say how much of a sacred gift fresh, clear, cool drinking water is. In fact, here are some straight numbers on it. How much of the water on the planet is too salty to drink? 97%. How much is actually available for us to drink? 1%. 37% of fish and rivers are unfishable, non-swimable. And every sewage treatment plant in the United States is in chronic non-compliance with the Clean Water Act. So I think we have a problem. And the problem is not unique to Fallsburg. That problem is also happening over in Lowercy, where I am a resident. And it's a problem with water and scarcity of water. It is a sacred gift. You have a very deep moral and ethical responsibility as planners to be sure that that gift is available for every resident who's here and the existing residents of this municipality take precedence over any new inhabitants moving into this jurisdiction. And it is your moral and ethical responsibility that I'm sure you are coming to grips with through tonight's hearing. And I give you all a lot of appreciation for weathering, hearing this much intense information. It's a lot to process. And I think this community deserves to give itself also a round of applause for having stepped up to the mic and articulated what needs to be said. And I just want to leave you in front of the fence, you are.
Katie Porter.
Hi. Thank you for being here. My name is Katie Porter, and my wife and I owned a house in Mountaindale for seven and a half years and are now putting everything we have into building a house in Woodbridge. We are starting a family here, and we are deeply committed to this community. I know this has come up already, but I'm also here to speak specifically about Section 310-9.3 of the newly proposed code. This allows non-conforming multifamily residential properties, also known as bungalow colonies, to increase their footprint by 50%, while conforming properties can only increase by 25%. It doesn't make sense and it's challenging to understand what this has to do with Arloopa, but it is really not hard to understand the strain this will put on the land and surrounding resources. This amendment seems arbitrary and misplaced here, particularly when applied to non-conforming buildings that already pose a higher fire risk. Bungalow colonies are grandfathered in because they were built before current zoning code, but the town has very formally recognized that they pose a serious fire hazard because the dwellings are so close together. This part of the proposal allows them to get even bigger and even closer together. And limiting current bungalow colony expansion is not about discrimination, because these fire risks are very real and they impact both the people who inhabit the buildings, but also our very many volunteer firefighters who dedicate their time to keeping our community safe. The ability to grandfather existing properties into new codes is really important. It allows the community to embrace healthy growth and develop code that is relevant to current condition, while also honoring the properties that are a really important part of this area's history. But allowing for reckless expansion compromises both of these efforts. The residents of Fallsburg already feel the strain, and I am asking the town to please consider these changes and the damaging impacts they will cause to the community. I'd also like to talk about water for a second. It keeps coming up in this kind of casual way, as though it's like an abstract thing that's not already very much happening. It is only a matter of time before our homes become uninhabitable and worthless if we don't have any water. And I think every person who's brought up water is making a really strong point. Thank you.
Jenny Foster.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jenny Foster. I'm starting my 15th year of living and working in this area of Sullivan County, and I was fortunate enough to become a property and homeowner in Fallsburg in 2023. So I'm here to add my voice to the chorus of people who are strongly opposing the zoning amendment, which would allow bungalow colonies to convert to year-round residences without planning board approval. This amendment would allow the development of those bungalows without critical oversight, including SIKRAS, which is a, SIKRAS reviews a legal requirement for any projects that may impact traffic, water, sewage, emergency response, and ecological systems. Without this oversight, Fallsburg really risks overburdening an already strained set of public services, including, but not unlimited to, our fire departments, our road maintenance, obviously the water supply, without any kind of assessment of consequences of these developments. I think failure to conduct an environmental review exposes the town to further liability and puts us all at risk for costly remediation if there are issues, whether individually of property owners and all of us as taxpayers. Additionally, this amendment stands in opposition to New York State legal precedent regarding non-conforming uses. New York Court of Appeals has repeatedly ruled that zoning laws should gradually phase out non-conforming uses rather than firmly entrench them in. This was recently reviewed in Toys R Us versus Silva in 1997, where the court reinforced that non-conforming uses are, quote, tolerated, but not encouraged, and should be strictly regulated. Allowing bungalow colonies originally non-conforming seasonal uses to become year-round residences without planning board approval contradicts New York State zoning principles and removes those essential checks that would ensure such conversions align with our comprehensive plan. It is critical that the town maintains oversight of land use changes. New York State Town Law, Section 272-A, states zoning changes must be in accordance with the municipality's comprehensive plan. Non-conforming uses cannot be converted into permanent high-density residential developments without due process. The town has an obligation to ensure that such conversions are subject to planning board review, public input, and environmental assessment. I deeply urge this board to reject this amendment and ensure that any bungalow to year-round conversions undergo planning board reviews, SIKRAS evaluation, and maintain compliance with New York State zoning laws. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for having us. I know it's getting late. I am 25 years old. I grew up in Sullivan County. I grew up on a farm in the town of Liberty, and I now farm in Sullivan County. And the removal of agricultural zone land is an incredibly huge issue around the nation right now. And it is something that rural communities vitally need to protect. Because the future of our food system, the future of our ability to have proper land stewards that are looking after our water and landscapes is going to be very important as we deal with anything related to erratic weather patterns, which we have seen with floods and fires just in this last year. I also would like to say that as a farmer, water is one of the most vital things we need for anything. Like going out and not being able to give your cows water is one of the most heartbreaking things you could possibly ask a farmer to do. And that is one of the elements you're telling people is that they are going to have to rely on other sources and figure things out on their own. When this is your responsibility to make sure that our communities are protected and that all of the contributions that they have for our community are also not put at stake. We don't have enough water in this area for what is proposed. Anyone looking at the developments can see that, period. And I would like to ask why there is not more investment in an environmental impact report? Because I want to know, like, is it that you're worried about the results? That shouldn't be a reason for not doing that. These zoning changes are dangerous not only to our rural, local economies for farmers, but it's also dangerous to everyone who lives here. And I would just like to say, I don't believe this is a religious divide, and I definitely don't think it should be a religious divide. I think this is looking at what is the capacity for our region? What is the environmental impact for this region? And what are the long-term effects? Earlier in the night, we saw a lot of young people sitting on the floor watching this discussion. And I really hope that the decisions you make, that you make, you will be able to look those young people in the eye and not have to apologize for making it that they don't have drinking water in their lives or that they have water contamination or that there's degradation to the town and the place that they love and are going to school. So whatever happens here, you saw the room earlier tonight, you have a fight on your hands for people who believe in a proper outcome that protects our environment and the people.
We're just gonna take two seconds.
We're just gonna take two seconds. Brett Buddy. What was that? Brett's on here. No, a guy, a guy speaking for him.
Yeah, because he had to leave, right?
But he already went.
He already went.
I have to go by what's on the list. I hear what you're saying, but I have to say the name.
You're doing a great job. Outstanding job.
You're doing a good job.
I know I'm doing a good job. Thank you.
Would you mind starting with a few minutes? Thank you. My name is Lauren Sykley. I'm a resident and a business owner in Sullivan County. I am not a lawyer and I have not been paid by anybody to come up here and give remarks. My sister Jenny lives in Los Angeles, where she and her family and her coworkers and friends just went through the traumatic wildfires that ravaged forty thousand acres of their community. Her house in Echo Park was spared, but many of her friends lost their homes, everything in it, including their pets, all of their belongings. And in one case, one woman lost her paralyzed son who she could not carry out of her home because, as we all now know, there was not enough water. In struggling to understand where things went wrong in L.A., the topic of climate change has come up a lot, but so did the topic of water or the lack of water. And someone recommended a book to me. It's called The Cadillac Desert: The American West and Its Disappearing Water. It is a history book written in nineteen eighty-six by Mark Reisner, who details the political corruption and the ruthless tactics of politicians to develop, develop, develop the land out west, which is a desert. It does not have the water to support the amount of development that came. And as a history book, it also outlines the warnings that were not heeded by the various people in positions of power who were elected to safeguard the citizens and the land. Decades of warnings came from experts and environmentalists that were ignored because you just can't get rich if you don't develop, develop, develop. The book is a history of one bad decision after another, made not for the good of the community, not for the good of the environment, not for the future, not for the collective good, but for the good of just a few, those who want their satisfaction now. Forty thousand acres in California just burned to the ground because of selfish overdevelopment, despite plenty of people sounding the alarm for decades. Your citizens, your constituents, are sounding the alarm to you today so that what happened in Los Angeles does not happen here, so that the people of this community do not lose everything that they have built and worked for here in this community year-round, so that their entire lives do not go up in flames in one afternoon. Can you heed these warnings or are you ready to sacrifice the people of this town?
Thank you very much.
Good evening and thanks for the board and everybody that's here tonight. Uh, I'm a taxpayer in the town of Fallsburg. We live here thirty-three years. The extended family lived here from nineteen sixty-one. I'm a board member and a couple of bungalow colonies and camps. Uh, they're complying beautifully. First, I want to share with you some good news. The concern came in so much about water. I want to share for the crowd that the town of Fallsburg has millions of gallons of water. There is an issue with pipes that have to be replaced. And town after town had those issues and they, uh, I guess legislators, they kind of, they went to their politicians and they allowed it and openly searched it for grants and it was done. So when you have a broken bridge, you fix the bridge. You don't black the town from growing and exploring and et cetera. I'd like to address something, uh, just to make it clear. When I'm here to create new laws, we're updating existing laws that were designed to modernize outdated infrastructure. Small group is working to impose a moratorium on improvements, making structures non-conforming and blacking necessary updates. This is a violation of federal RLO. How can we meet safety codes and modern standards if we can't revitalize our infrastructure? Second, there is a false narrative that the board is allowing unrestricted buildings on agriculture. This is a complete lie. This is being stretched, talked fear and opposition to necessary updates. The claim harvest zones are being destroyed spaceless. In fact, responsible development and has both increased tax revenue and jobs. The false narrative only misleads the public and hampers progress. Third, we must confront the hate and division being spread, social media, especially on Facebook, targeting specific communities with begotive language. This is not, this is not only false, but this is dangerous. It bears fear, division, and destruction, none of which helps us move forward. We must not allow hate speech and define our town. Hatred and fear have no place here. No matter how we need unity, we must want together to focus on what truly matters. Updating infrastructure, water, sewer, electricity systems, create thriving, sustainable community for all. This isn't about just keeping up with the times. It's about building a safe, prosperous future for everyone. It's troubling that the county continues to oppose these necessary improvements. We were the, when, we're with them in the water and the tourism needed updated decades ago. The objections align with the fight progress. Thank you very much.
Just been a marathon. Okay, I'm Mary Adams and, um, thank you all for sitting and listening to all of, all of everything. How great it was. What a great turnout. So, uh, I probably am not going to say everything I was going to say because it's been said. But one thing I do want to make really clear is that bungalow colonies are not religious uses under the RLO law. RLO protects religious institutions from undue zoning burdens, but that simply does not apply here. There is no legal basis for treating bungalow colonies as religious uses. Thank goodness, uh, well, I just want to back up. So a few weeks ago, a few people on the board, and I know you guys pretty well now and you work hard, but I was really disappointed that we almost voted on this six weeks ago. And that was before a county two thirty-nine was done or SEACER. And that was really disappointing for me. I had been trusting your due diligence. And I don't know what consulting you had, you had time to do because I know you're really busy. Maybe you didn't actually read every line of that zoning code. But I am really thrilled that people in our community did do that. And we realized, no way. It needs to be worked on line by line. And if it's a committee, it should be, you know, a diverse committee, but it needs to be done and it's extremely important. And I, I just was shocked that there was even a consideration of voting on this six weeks ago. Now, you didn't and you extended and you've listened, so thank you for that. I really appreciate it. We all do. Um, I just questioned, what is the rush? Why are we rushing on zoning changes that do not comply with our comprehensive plan? What is the pressure? I really wonder what, what is that? It's a good question. You've heard all of these different examples of people who don't have proper water. And I'm just gonna check my climate. I don't have too much more. I live in Locksheld, there are eleven developments planned for there. Nineteen hundred units. This is just Locksheld. And the estimation for water use is not correct because it's for one person per one bedroom. Not correct. And this doesn't include Fallsburg or Woodbridge. So please get the proper data before you make these big decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Hurleyville Art Center for having us here in Hamlet, Holyoke. We're on the resident in this multi-use space where everyone's built for everyone to use in any way. I'd like to acknowledge the participation of my fellow fully assessed, tax-paying community public here who are constantly being committed to foot the bill for infrastructure improvements due to population density increases. Not only are municipal resources overcapacity, but private residential water resources are being usurped and invaded by high-capacity deep wells and wasteful usage of water resources certain days in a week. If there are any changes to be made, a stricter review of comprehensive environmental impact reports, not only by the town, but by the state, should be mandated. It's irresponsible and unfair for this committee to permit projects that continue to raise the tax basis of fully assessed citizens. But also, the Department of Environmental Conservation likely has something to say about the decisions that have been made in the past decades and are now asked to be made again. Twenty-four-hour light pollution, community pollution. These issues aren't going away due to the misjudgment, poor decision-making in the past decades of this town. We're not asking you what to do. We are the taxpayers and we are telling you what to do in our town. The nation right now is making precedents about how we want our public services and how we want our public servants to act for us. We pay for you to be here. We pay for lights to be on, pay for the water, pay for roads. We don't want to pay for litigation for groups who want to come in, get more of the services. We want to have those services, like potholes repaired, basic services. We're not asking you what to do. We're telling you what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I have like eight people left, um, on the list to speak. So if those eight people could move toward the front in the essence of time, um, that would be saved. Raphael Burton.
Thank you for the board. Thank you for being here. My great-great-grandfather founded Gibber's Hotel in Kayamisha. My great-grandfather was a farmer. He had a chicken farm. And also in Sullivan County. My grandfather grew up here and now a student over here in Fallsburg. I'm a resident. I want to address the, the problem of camps being a religious institution. I think I urge the, the board to go down to camps to see. Five hours every morning, they're praying, they're studying the Torah, the religious book. In the afternoon, those who, those who are our counselors, our religious role models, they help us. They, they show us what a good, good person could be, how to act, how to act with our friends, how to act to God. At night also, there's more prayers, there's more study. I urge the board to go down to the camps, to send a committee and to see how much religion is at all in the camps. Secondly, I urge the board to make a cost-benefit analysis of all the money that's coming for taxes from the bungalow colonies, from the camps and from all the summer residences to see. And to make a, and to see how much water is used, how much resources are being used. The analysis should not only include the resource, what's going to come from future zoning laws, but also all of that brought in and everything that, and also what it will bring in. Thank you.
Thank you. Perry Giff. Perry? Elizabeth Gregg.
I'm a town boy for your patience and staying so long tonight. My name is Elizabeth Gregg and I live in the town of Liberty. I'm here at the town of Fallsburg Public Hearing because the zoning changes the town is proposing will have a negative impact on my and others' quality of life by significantly changing the rural character of our county. Given that some of the amendments are being proposed to address claims under Aruppa, I want to address the relationship between nature and the sacred here in our home in the Catskills. For thousands of years, human beings have come to Catskill Mountains to worship. There is documented evidence of Native American buildings, building secret stone worship sites throughout the century, including in Sullivan County. And beginning more than a hundred years ago, there have been and continue to be many monasteries, retreat sites, and houses of worship, started by many different faiths. All have been and are free to worship here. What attracted people to practice their dedicated worship here? The peace of the mountains and the waters and the exquisite beauty of the natural world. All of these religious and spiritual traditions have recognized in their own way that God, however they choose to call this greater power, is manifest here through the power, the silence, and the beauty of nature. The incredible, awe-inspiring natural world found in the Catskills has been a foundation and support for their worship. And up to now, all of these traditions have shown their deep respect for nature in how they have used this land, how they have preserved its natural features and its resources, how they have maintained the peacefulness by keeping their human-impact life. They have minimized architectural structures, parking lots and pavement, bright lights, and unnecessary noise. They have valued and preserved the natural landscape with its forests and clean waters as part of their spiritual and religious practice. So I urge the town Fallsburg Board to recognize that what has brought people here for thousands of years to worship can easily be destroyed if you allow the forests to be cut down, the land to be taken.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Alex Portugal. Alex Portugal. Peter Carey. Done? Okay. Amy Carey.
We have a fire department meeting right now also.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening. I'm Amy Barker. Carrie and I have Maple Woods Farm in Locksheld. My children are the next generation of Lauren Sparkleys on the land over there. And we're one of the largest landowners with over two hundred and fifty acres between my whole family. So agriculture is a huge part of our lives and it's one of the reasons why we're here today because we all want to preserve it because once it's gone, it's gone. I appreciate very, very much the plan that this board has put together. And I also appreciate the two thirty-nine that the county rebutted with. I think there is room for a healthy compromise and a balance to, to ensure that everybody, every landowner can do what they would like to do. to ensure that everybody, every landowner, can do what they would like to do on their property following well-laid-out laws set by the town. That being said, I also appreciate very much that boards ahead of you made decisions and granted approval for projects before your time, and now you are the ones here having to deal with it. I understand completely. I also understand that you have the opportunity to be brave, along with all these folks behind you, and I know a lot of them left, but a lot are still here, and they're watching. That we have your back. We support you. I really want to urge you to contact the United States Geological Service and see if you can get an operative study. And maybe that would answer some of the questions to all the water concerns. I am blessed to have a well. I am blessed to be able to water my animals. But I also understand wells run dry because of old infrastructure. It does happen. We had a drought the last couple of years, and things go dry. I lose hay crop because of the inability to grow second or third kind. I understand completely. You have the opportunity to be brave, along with the folks behind me, to work together and then come up with maybe a new comprehensive plan or revisit the old comprehensive plan and see what we can do to find a healthy balance for all residents of the Town of Folsberg. Speaking as a fire department member in Locksheldrick, we had 197 calls last year. So I've heard, because I listen to my pager all day, Folsberg had many, many more than us. And this is why they utilize Woodridge as a partnership and mutual aid company. Membership is low. It's hard to get the people out. That being said, nearly 50% of our calls were automatic alarms. I hate using word "bungalows," but for better, "bungalows," automatic alarms to the religious communities. And there were usually not key holders there, so our fire chief could not get in. I can't speak for the fire chief, but I am married to him, so I do hear all of the complaining at home. I encourage you to relook at your plan and see how it does affect the fire companies and all of your public servants who want to continue doing business and volunteering in your town. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Kenny Stroup. I live in Woodburn, New York. I moved here 10 years ago. I served on the Sullivan County Farm Bureau Board. My life revolves around agriculture. The very definition of agriculture is the stewardship of land and resources, including water. I do not see that same definition for high-density housing. It is the exact opposite. We need, as a community, to do environmental impact study, just as previously mentioned. A moratorium is not a bad idea. It is a temporary fix and hold. That is also under recommendation. Why the rush? Why are we not investing in our community, in the agricultural community, who's been here for years? The Carrys, for nine generations, the Sodas, for forever. I mean, we're just pushing out our own farms and families. For what? What is your legacy? What are you going to be behind for the next generation? I have three kids. I raised in Tri Valley through the FFA program. And we're starting a hotting farm while I work in the community. I travel for agriculture all over the U.S. and Canada. I see what no water does to those communities. I work with farms in California that do not have water. I work with communities in other rural areas that do not have water because of the overgrown infrastructure and urban sprawl. It does not work. There has to be comprehensive planning. Our kids need a future here. What are you leaving them? What is your legacy for them? Because right now, I'm telling my kids, don't come back here. I don't have a good solution. I need you guys to come up with a helpful solution and let us as a community back you. But we don't feel backed. And as a firefighter's spouse and a family member of... My biggest fear as part of the first responder family is that these guys are in a fire, and somebody is in a structure, and there is no water. If we lose one single firefighter, that is on all of you for not doing the exact impact study and having the water available for our firefighters to fight the fires. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you for coming.
Hello, boy. How are you? There are things growing in Sullivan County and the Town of Folsberg, but it's not the town. Not the residents. What's happening is, there's no housing, and there's a problem that there has not been one board that has tried to develop housing for low-income or affordable housing. There has not been anyone that's tried to do that for people who have lived here all their lives, their kids growing up here, and they'd like to be able to have affordable housing as well. So when we're talking about water and sewer, we need to be talking about the whole picture for our town. And we would like for our people to be able to build houses as well, to have affordable housing. Our town should be trying to do a little bit more for the people. I'm just saying, you know, and I'm a 16-year resident, homeowner, business owner. And it's just at the point right now where we really need to consider what it is that has to be done in our town. And I think a moratorium is the answer. There's no water. The sewer's messed up. Traffic is not that good. So just think about it, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, everyone, who's here, the residents and the board. My name's Edward Hall, and my family and I, we've been in this area hoping to build our future home with our daughters here in Folsberg. But we have had to delay, and we're watching what the future development looks like. And very clearly, the existing natural world, the natural life of this region is so overstrained where we are, that yes, we have neighbors that their wells are running dry. We are farmers, and we have been farming since 2018. And we've been deciding if we're gonna focus in Ulster County or in Sullivan County for the future of our business and our family. And it's coming from New Mexico, despite my ancestors, pre-revolutionary war indentured servants who escaped in New York, who helped found this country. I'm coming from a desert, and something told me to come this direction, and it might have had to be maybe my ancestry, because we are in a time where 1/3 of the human family lives with water insecurity. People all over the world are trying to come to places that have water security. So we should not tolerate any kind of insult to the existing living water that can support countless lives. It's a human rights issue. It's not just a residential issue for all of us. We need to protect this for all of the human race, for the estuaries of the Hudson and the Delaware, which, how clean the estuaries are starts at the headwaters. And I see consistently that we need to change the culture around how we take care of the water, because it's being so intensely insulted that we take better care of our water in New Mexico than over here. And it's really scary to see the way the water's treated here, because that water becomes the water that children are conceived in. The water that we are drinking and how it's treated becomes what the children are conceived in, and what they grow up in. And how you treat that is how you treat those generations right now. And you don't just represent us. And I really commend this town board for taking the time to engage with this and opening it up so we can hopefully heal and unite more of our community around how we take care of these resources. And they're not really resources. They're really a trust from the Creator. And how we treat creation reflects how we treat our relationship to the Creator. And I really hope we address also the light pollution. In Albuquerque, it's less light pollution than here.
Thank you. That's important.
Okay, so we've already exhausted the lists. If anyone else would like to speak tonight, that would be your opportunity too. We are gonna stay a little bit longer. What we'll do is, maybe we'll take a couple-minute breaks so that people can move up to the front and sign up to speak, and maybe if someone needs to use the restroom real quick. If no one else wants to speak, then we'll move ahead with our business for tonight. But I just want to make sure that everybody that wants to be heard is heard tonight, regardless of what we end up doing after tonight. So I just want to give everyone the opportunity. Does anyone else want to speak tonight? I have one person in the back raising their hand.
Come forward, please.
I have two people. So if we don't have a lot of people, I guess we could just form a line and just, you know, not have to take a break. But I want to make sure that everybody here has an opportunity.
You have to come up to me, because we're doing the list like we do at the other meetings. So, what's your name? Oh, we called you, and you weren't here.
Yes, that's true. Wait, what? He's in the bathroom.
Yeah, he was, but he wasn't here.
Make sure the poll is ready.
So is it just the two people then?
Okay.
Alex, I had called him, but he was outside, so. Alex Portugal.
Hello. Thank you all. Thank you all, everybody. I wish I would be able to bridge this gap and explain to everybody.
Alex, I'm just gonna stop you right there. You're gonna talk to the board, not to the people.
How are you? Thanks for your public servants. Thanks for sitting here. I wish everybody here would understand that nobody's here to help anybody. Nobody's here here to drink up and drain anybody's water. First, on my end, if there's anything to bridge this gap and help everybody understand this. Everybody that comes up in the summer wants to have this place, a nice place, a vacation place. Nobody wants to have... There's no point in coming up without, if there isn't drinking water or water to flush the thuds. I do live up here, so if it comes a weekend that you don't have water, you could come to my house on the Monticello. Yeah, it's an open invite, except when I walk out the door. And whatever the decision is, I wish you all the best. Thank you for your service.
Thanks, Alex. Annie Appaloogee Hall.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak.
One moment. We're just gonna reset the clock for you.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a local resident just over the border. We have lived here in Folsberg for nine years now. We bought when we still lived in New York City, because we have a lot of respect for the natural world for one thing, and for the humanity in another sense, so that we came up here to make sure that these are the headwaters for the Hudson River and the Delaware Basin, that we came up here and set good intentions for these sacred waters. We are farmers. I'm also a chef. I work with local farmers to feed people and bring health into their lives and help them reset their lives so that they can get off of all sorts of drugs and just come back to their natural well-being. So I'm a health chef. And I'm about to reopen the restaurant next door and support all the local farmers here to feed the people in this town through this God-given gift that my parents and ancestors gave me of cooking. And I'm concerned about coming to work on Fridays and Saturdays. I go home, I went to cross to Woodridge when I was working at the Liberty Family Market. I would need to cross there on a Friday afternoon. I almost lost my life and my children's lives a couple of times. I got to call the police to ask for escorts, because people drive in very dangerous ways. And it's, you know, it's a lack of respect, I think, for the people around us, like just ignoring that we are all here united and all born of the same creator, on the same land. And we need to just have a better collaborative mind to live next to each other and respect our environment and our neighbors. And it's been really hard to find who our neighbors are. We are such big communities that only show up a couple months a year. Nothing wrong with seasonal neighbors, but it's just the amount, you know, it's kind of overwhelming. So just, you know, sharing with you how I feel, and thank you for your attention. Good luck with your decision, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else want to speak tonight before we move ahead? Just gonna give you a couple seconds. All right. So if that's the case, then considering that we have so much to digest from tonight, as well as our continued work reviewing the 239, as well as our efforts to collaborate and work with outside groups, including Catsfield Mountain Keeper, you know, to make sure that there are no unintended consequences to these amendments that we're looking to make, I would make the suggestion that we keep the public hearing open, at least for written comments, for maybe another 30 days. We could always open it, close it, but for the time being, I think it would be prudent for us to just keep the public hearing open so that members of the community can still send in written comments to us for us to be able to still view while we work with our community groups and, most importantly, our attorneys and the group's attorneys to ensure that, you know, we do our due diligence. But I'll take any motion.
Unless you have a comment.
No, I was just gonna make a motion too. You want to do it? I'll second it.
Dylan, is that a motion to close the oral but leave the written open?
So we can do that. Yeah, so I'll make a motion to close the oral, leave the written open.
I'll second it.
I have a second. All in favor?
All right.
Aye. All right, motion passes. So at this point, public hearing is still open for 30 days for written comments. You know, after that time, we may decide to extend again, depending on various reviews and times that it takes us to review all of your comments. I think that would be the most prudent thing for us to do at this point. So that said, the oral public hearing is closed tonight, and we are gonna move ahead with our agenda items. So everyone is welcome to stay right off the end of our meeting.
Where do you send the public written comments? How do you send them?
You could send the written comments to the town clerk or my confidential secretary, either by email, in person, by mail, any way you can get it to us. We will make sure that it's entered into the public record and that all the members of this board, you know, have a chance to read it.
Thank you.